7:00 and we were gonna pick it back up at 1 o'clock and we're missing half the room. There's what? I'm here. What do you want to do, Bill? That would be awesome. Let's do it. Let's do it. You can do whatever you want. I don't answer to you. That's kinda true. Okay, do we have anybody here that's ready to public speak if we were to get started? We have one. I'm gonna give it two more minutes just to see if we can get a few people in the room. If they're outside, would you holler at them to come in, please? Thank you. I'd do it, but I'd have to put a boot on to get there. Gina, you lost your coat. You lost your jacket. Did she have one on earlier? It's hot. I know. Okay, so we're going now. We're not filming, right?
Thank you.
We really hope so because she was talking...
No.
It's her, not me. Oh, I'm not going there. I could embarrass you, though. Life's good, right? Oh, yes. I will do that for you. I appreciate you just asking a question without two hours of commenting, so absolutely you're gonna get your answer. Till we go over 17.91. I doubt it. I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion with the commissioners and deliberation. Yeah, I will go over all of that for everybody and thank you. Thanks. If we have time, we're gonna roll. If we go...
No, I meant we can't split up the agenda so that the public could make their comments and go home.
Oh, and then do all deliberations tomorrow?
Yeah.
We could always open before morning. Yeah, so I think so, okay. You almost made me get up. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order and just so that we can explain where we left off, we were in the midst of public comment on 17.95 and the DEIR. Could you silence your phone, please? Thank you. Hope mine doesn't do that now. Anyway, so where we're at is, and I had a lot of questions as soon as we left for lunch and people were asking, are we gonna get a second chance to comment after the commissioners deliberate? The answer is no. Your chance to comment is now. And instead of doing three minutes, we did five minutes to give the public a good opportunity. The only thing that I want to remind everybody of so that you don't feel like you didn't get a chance to get a second bite of the apple is the planning commissioners are only making a recommendation to the board of supervisors. We are not the final say in this. So, your second bite at the apple and your second comment period on any recommendation that we send forward will be when it goes to the supervisors. So, your public comment still matters, you still get another opportunity, and I'm just expressing that to you all here now. Did I say anything wrong, Peter?
No.
Okay. Correct. So, we were going there now. So, today, what I was saying is today, right now, is 17.95. I would anticipate deliberation will go on quite some time because all of these commissioners like to talk a lot. So, we will beat it to death and then tomorrow, I would suspect that we will open with 17.91, which is the dispensaries, and Peter will do the same thing as we did here today with 17.95. Peter will start out with the staff report and then we will move over into the public comment. We won't have the sheriff here, so we won't have a line of people to ask him questions. We got our answers today. So, now, I would like to go to public comment where we ended. This lady's been waiting a very long time. And come on forward. And thank you all very much for today. It's been good so far.
My name is Tina Alexander. I'm a shareholder and an employee of Calaveras Garden Supply here in San Andreas. Our shop provides 11 full-time jobs, buys from multiple local vendors, and has cleared over 8 million in revenue this year alone.
Okay, are you speaking to dispensaries or are you gonna speak to commercial growing in the EIR?
Pardon me?
Are you speaking in relevance to the dispensaries or commercial growing?
Commercial growing.
Okay, I thought you were talking about a dispensary. I apologize.
No.
Okay.
The reason for our success, simply, the cannabis farmers here in Calaveras County. Without them, our doors will be closed and my staff will be back on the job market. The revenue and taxes we pay disappear. Another boarded-up shop in San Andreas. No one seems to consider the effect of the auxiliary businesses who depend on the business of registered farmers to survive. Many of you may not realize it, but we all do in some way. The farmers are free to be open about who they are in my store, but not so much in other local businesses. That's something you all need to consider before deciding to ban or not. How many of you depend on the farming community and don't even realize it? I see farmers every time I step into every shop, every restaurant, every grocery store. So, imagine this community, if we, what it'll look like if we ban. Not only will Calaveras Garden Supply be boarded up, soon, most of Calaveras will end up with nothing but an out-of-business sign on their door. So, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi.
Hello. My name is Megan Zalvez. I am the co-founder of Rolling Hills Bookkeeping here in San Andreas. I'd like to bring just a few things to your attention, commissioners. My company submitted a peer review of the EIR via our attorney, Chris Powell, and I wanted to bring some findings to your attention in hopes that will help you make a more informed decision. So, the peer review was put together in August by a company called WRA Environmental Consultants, and they found that the draft EIR had an inadequate baseline, that illegal cannabis cultivation operations impact sensitive biological resources via impacts to aquatic resources, used-to-pesticide, trash left behind, and vegetation clearance. These illegal operations are often localized in smaller, sensitive watersheds that are hotspots to biodiversity. Compared with more established forms of agriculture where abundant winter stream flows sometimes captured and stored locally in ponds and tanks, illegal cannabis cultivation is typically irrigated with summer and fall surface water directly from headwater streams and springs. Impacts from the surface water diversions for irrigation resulting range from reduced flows to completely dewatered systems. The impact of stream flow diversions and diminished or eliminated stream flow disappropriately affects aquatic species, especially those which are already sensitive and declining. Studies have shown that diminished flows can be particularly damaging to salmon fishes. The Department of Fish and Wildlife has identified that water diversions and altered or diminished in stream flows due to land use practices have a significant impact resulting in juvenile and adult mortality in the fish here in local streams. Fact of the matter is, is that illegal grows were not contributed to the baseline that was used in the draft EIR. The illegal grows are the problem here, not the registered farmers. The registered farmers are being compliant with everything they've been requested of them, at least most of them have. I know that you have seen multiple appeals and I've sat and witnessed some of the things that you've had to listen to, but I also know that you have seen and heard a lot of farmers who are doing everything they can to be compliant with the laws that have been laid down for them. So, instead of considering making all of them illegal growers and forcing so many people to shut down, lose jobs in this county, I really urge you to request a new baseline for this report so you can get more facts and have a whole picture rather than a report that was based mostly on one farm. The other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is, you may or may not know, my farm works with multiple cannabis farms and dispensaries here in Calaveras, 139 to be exact. We have assisted in prepping and filing over 100 farm tax returns this year. My clients paid roughly 2 million of the 7 million collected in Measure C tax. One client just cut a check for $38,000 in personal income tax revenue to the IRS and to the FTB. So, anyone who stands here and claims that these farmers aren't paying their taxes, they are misled and they're trying to mislead you. Should a ban be enacted here in Calaveras, not only will the registered farms be closed, my firm will be as well. We supply work for four employees and three contractor CPAs. We've been in business for 361 days. Imagine how many more jobs we could provide this time next year. I urge you to base your decision today on fact and not on the personal feelings that so many people come up here to express as fact. And the fact of the matter is, this report is flawed. We need a better one. We need to review it. We need to do this the right way the first time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aurora Weatherby. I'm District 5, Valley Springs. I'm a lifetime resident of Calaveras County. I guess you could say lifetime. I've been here since I was three years old. I've raised my children here. I've gone to school here. We're third generation. I've seen many changes in this county over the years and what I've seen in the last two years in this county is extremely distressing to me. I had to reorganize my thoughts today because I had been prepared to talk tomorrow, to gather what information I had here today, to study tonight and to be able to comment on both issues tomorrow. But just before break, it was brought to my attention that I could only talk about the EIR report. So, okay, EIR, as I understood it, I attended several meetings. I talked to Mr. Maurer direct and I heard Mr. Maurer speak at a Republic meeting and he said that the board of supervisors asked them for a ban. They wrote up the ban. They left out the dispensaries. Because I asked that question, because the People's Initiative that was thrown out by Alpine County Judge, the People's Initiative asked for the dispensaries to be eliminated as well as all commercially grown marijuana in Calaveras County. I've read Fish and Game reports that say our waters are contaminated, it's killing our animals. I have family that live up in Willseville. They used to have a lot of deer that came in on their property. They don't anymore. They have a very reduced herd, maybe four or five. So, something is happening to the animals up there as well. Their water has not been tested. I have asked them to get their water tested because they've had a loss of at least three calves. These babies were born alive and they were like two to three days old when they died. They took them to UC Davis and they could find no reason why they died, but nobody tested the water. They didn't find out if there was chemicals that had come down and with the heavy rains and winter that we had last year may have contaminated the groundwater. Maybe the moms were big enough to ward off any ill effects from these chemicals, but the babies are not. They're too small. Their immune systems are not that great. Another thing that concerns me a whole lot is the children in this county. These kids are getting the marijuana. This is not a good thing. They can become addicted to it. Anybody who says they cannot, that's a bold-faced lie because they can. I can speak from life experiences here because I've had family that have been very affected by drugs, starting with marijuana. I have a nephew that's buried over in the cemetery, People Cemetery. He started with alcohol. Alcohol, marijuana, alcohol, marijuana, cocaine, to heroin. He died of hepatitis C from dirty injections. I've had two nephews, one on my side, one on my husband's side. THC in the marijuana, traffic accidents. One served a 10-year sentence in Nevada State Prison because he was high. Vehicle or manslaughter is what he was charged with. He killed his partner in life. A nephew on my husband's side, eight years in San Quentin because of drugs. THC content in his blood. Vehicle or manslaughter. Not a good thing. It's just, it is just terrible what's going on in this county. The commercial grows tell you, well, there's the good guys, the bad guys, and it doesn't matter if they're good guys or bad guys. The issue is all down into, we're Calaveras County. We're unique. We're not Alameda County. We're not Humboldt County. And it distresses me to hear us referred to as Little Humboldt. We're not Little Humboldt. We're a bigger and better people than that and we can be a better county without marijuana. We can do without the criminal intent. We can do without the increased crime. And we can protect our children. They are our future. They are our tomorrow. And marijuana, the THC content in it, affects their brains as they grow.
Thank you.
Hi, Alice Montgomery, District 3, State of California, Registered Environmental Assessor. I want to talk to you about the EIR. First, I want to thank Peter Maurer and his staff for the work they've done on it. September 18th, I talked to the State of California Department of Planning and Resources. They now administer CEQA, Natural Resources Department. Used to do that. I asked him about our EIR. Yeah, I signed it. Thank you. I asked him about our EIR and the alternatives and the suggestions that are in it. And what they told me is that if we do any form of any alternative to EIR we have, this is a quote, "Any alternative regulation will have to be attached to the old EIR. The recirculate 40-day period will begin." So, you don't have to make a new EIR, but if you do anything different than what's in the EIR, tweak it a little bit, try to float that, we start the process over again. I imagine, although I can't be sure, that most planning commissioners, who I really appreciate here, are really concerned with the health and safety of our environment, of our people, and our economics. That's my concern, too. I'm worried about the idea of sensible regulation. Sensible regulation, to me, has been floated as, let's have more. We want distribution, delivery, manufacturing, processing, storage, testing, transportation. What they're not telling you is what happens in that. And I've been to Colorado three times to interview a lot of people and around here as well. There's a lot that goes on with that. What they're not mentioning to you is, yeah, maybe they want to work with CO2 in the manufacturing. There is a loophole in Prop 64 that allows you to use butane still. There is a way to do it. So, that's what I'm concerned about. The whole idea that everything is always organic, or was what someone told me a couple days ago, beyond organic, which I've never heard of that term before, sent me off on another field trip. So, I went to a local place that many growers buy and I bought $108 worth of supplies yesterday. Everything from fertilizer to amendments, all that. I checked it against the, what I know to be our restricted chemicals, substances and all that. They had them in some of those products that they sell to grow marijuana on permitted grows here, still. And that's where I get disillusioned. I don't think we really need to worry too much about the lawsuits because they're already here. There's no use worrying. Our, I think, idea about lawsuits is how to prevent them. And it appears that the ban is the only way to do that because they just keep suing. We just had not even a veiled threat today from the head of the stakeholders group saying, oh, don't ban and you won't have lawsuits. We won't sue. Well, you know, I think that's not a really promising promise. Another thing that I worry about is what's going downstream. Do we worry about East Bay mud? Do we, what are we, what are we gonna get from them, from the valley? These things are very, very important. The planned expansion, the things they're not talking about, the pollutants, and I can tell you, someone said they don't know how much it costs to, when you try to mitigate or remediate a site. I will tell you how much it costs. The small end, if there is contamination, it can be and usually is about 1 million. It can go up to 3 million. That's per address, per site. It is the gift that keeps on giving. Every landowner is responsible whether they leased out their site forever. You have perpetual liability for hazardous waste. So, that's very important to know. I do not feel that I'm unsympathetic toward growers. We have farmers and ranchers on both sides of my family. I also know it's a choice. There are other things people can do here. This was a temporary situation and I have nothing personal against anybody, but I do think we need to think about the future of our county. And I think that we can ban and I think we can capture the Prop 64 money by structuring 17.91 so that we can allow limited commercial grows within the dispensaries. We can do both. We can be compassionate and allow personal and medical caregiver and we cannot pollute. That's all I'm asking. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Patricia Gordo. I'm a grandmother, a great-grandmother. I do not believe that regulation has worked. I've read a report that homes, home values have dropped in Calaveras County. And I have personally noted pop-up tents with the sides closed appearing in front of houses. I don't know what's behind houses, but those are kind of hard to miss. Marijuana exchanged in parking lots. Marijuana plants exchanged in parking lots. People handing off packages along the road out of the dry grass. Trucks full of green without tarps going down the road. And I'm talking big trucks. Registered grows are not necessarily following the regulations. There is not enough people to go out and regulate what's going on out there. So, I don't believe regulation has worked. I've reported water trucks and other vehicles going in and out with food-grade containers laying down, coming back with food containers, standing up with makeshift tops. I mentioned it to the sheriff. He said marijuana is legal. I was out by my gate and a truck went by smelling like propane. The sheriff's office was interested in that. According to the urgency ordinance, you are not supposed to haul in water for marijuana. It's happening anyway. One house went from two cars to seven cars and an RV. I'd like to be that landlord. County expenses and time cannot cover need, as you heard the sheriff say, nor can the DA prosecute cases because they lack funds and the funds have been totally used up by marijuana issues. The track and trace is ridiculous because you do not need seeds to grow marijuana. One plant will provide untold numbers of clones. And as you can see, I don't go along with any type of marijuana growing. I went to the hearing that they had when they wanted to do medical marijuana. And if I had to do it over again, I would have done something to shoot it because it has brought us to where we are today.
Thank you.
I can't see you because I have my glasses on.
Good morning, good afternoon, now.
I am a Fish and Game Commissioner, however, I'm not here in an official manner. But I first became kind of aware of what was going on when I saw our sheriff give his May 30th presentation where he talked about some of the environmental damages that we had. And he mentioned fear Dan, which was a very, very scary thing to me. So, I've done a number of interviews with a number of people, including Dr. Gabriel, who is the most noted international scientist regarding marijuana environmental dangers. I've also talked with Scott Bauer of Fish and Game. Who else have I talked with? Mark Higley, he is also with Fish and Game. And I also talked to a Berkeley professor and she is an expert in cyanobacteria. So, what I'm concerned about is, one of the people said that no fertilizer or pesticides have been approved for use on marijuana. So, I don't know if you've looked at any containers, but they don't say on there what marijuana approved. They're also very concerned about water diversions. These are the experts that I'm telling you about. They're concerned about diesel fuel. They're concerned about clear-cutting. They're concerned about illegal grading. They're concerned that fertilizers are left in like 400-gallon tanks. They're concerned that fertilizers are thrown into wells. They're concerned about, from the illegal grading, the sediment that goes into rivers, which causes turbidity, and we're already having an issue with the salmon. As you know, they've been draining Maloney's to try to save the fish. So, that's a concern to me as a Fish and Game person. There's also cross-contamination where somebody will work in an approved grow and then go to an illegal grow and back over to approved. They say that the fertilizer can create the CNO bacteria. I lived in Watsonville and there's a lake called Pinto Lake. Make a note of Pinto Lake and Google it. It is the most contaminated lake in California and it has killed sea otters. Now, if you were to go Pinto Lake in Watsonville and go up to where the sea otters were, I would say it's probably 8 to 10 miles. So, my concern is, what happens when we have the fertilizers and some of the other things that we're using on crops here? Because Pinto Lake is an agricultural lake and was surrounded by strawberries. So, I think that we can have the same kind of contamination in some of the lakes and, you know, Lake Tullock and Copperopolis, that's where they get their drinking water from. So, it could be a public health and public safety issue. They all said that, that the pesticides, they're all finding some of the anticoagulants, which are illegal. They all said that they could bust 100% of them for one thing or another, even the legal grows. They said that basically what happens is you go in the beginning and then that's it. There's no more inspection. So, after they leave, these grows double in size and a number of scientists told me that they will do whatever they have to at the end to get their product to market, whether they have to spray it with things that have not been approved. So, anyway, the other thing they told me and I said, hey, how long do you think if we were to put a stop on this, how long do you think it would take? They all said it would take us possibly five to seven years to clean this thing up. So, my recommendation is that we need a ban. We need a total ban. And my recommendation would also be, we need a ban on dispensaries. Put the brakes on and then save the county, save the environment, save the health of the people that go out to these grows. They're unprotected. As a matter of fact, one of the detectives I talked to wanted to speak to Dr. Gabriel because he didn't know what kind of suits he should be wearing, what kind of protection he should have. So, we're ill-equipped. We don't have an expert living in Calaveras like Dr. Gabriel. So, thank you for your time. So thank you for your time, and I hope you recommend a ban.
Thank you. Did you sign your name on the sheet, or would you be willing to? No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jennifer Stewart, District 2. I'm going to follow up with Elaine, because when I worked in Sacramento County in my father's ranch, and we grew pears and apple in Sacramento County, and I was the one who had to get the pesticide applicator's permit and follow all the rules to keep our guys that did the spray applications safe and us out of harm's way. The original thing with organophosphates is what you have to do is have a blood test, a baseline blood test. So our guy would go get his blood test, and then he would suit up for organophosphates when we did have to spray. It is a suit, is a Tyvek suit, but it also has an additional layer over the top of it. It's kind of like a Saran Wrap layer, so there's no permeability at all on the body. It's a full jumpsuit, booties over his boots. The head thing is also, his head is also covered, nitro gloves up to the wrists, I mean, up to the elbows, and then also a full face shield and a respirator that has been fit-tested so there's absolutely no permeability for any vapor, any dust, any particulates at all to get into him. Organophosphates, if you guys don't know, is a nerve agent, and it's also something that is accumulative in your liver. And every time you spray, that for us, it has to, for them, it had to be before 80 degrees in the morning, absolutely no wind, so there would be no drift, nothing to get into streams, creeks, ponds, and lakes. If there was any, we had to make an incident report to the state of California. For our people that are going out now, for the sheriff's department of first responders or anybody who goes out there, not protected. They are being dosed with organophosphates. The sheriff even proved it when he did his May 30th report, when he did his bullet point presentation. That's when it shook me, because I saw organophosphates and carbamides. All of them are nerve agents, all of them are highly toxic, all of them cause birth defects. When we sprayed at least two times in a 30-day period, he had to go get retested, another blood test, and if there was any change in his colon esterase count, he had to go to the hospital. Now, we've had some evidence of some of our first responders, after they've gone in being unprotected and gone through and done an eradication, they get rashes, and then they're starting to vomit, and the diarrhea and everything that comes with it. That is being dosed. And so even for the growers, I mean, I worry about them for being exposed to this stuff without having any labels to tell them what the ramifications are. There's people, farm labor camps, that have been subject to dosing with airborne sprays. The women that are in there, they have babies that are born with no arms and no legs. And it is, you just have to Google "organophosphate poisoning," and it is methyl, ethyl, bad stuff. That's, I just wanted to let you guys know.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Morris, District 4. I think we're at a point now where this is no longer about legal grows and the illegal grows. This is about our county, this is about public safety. I think it's about public safety for all of us. We're all the residents here, the people that have said they've been here for a long time, the growers, the ones that have come, we're all residents here. And I think the big elephant in the room, or the thing is, we now do know we have these pesticides that Jennifer's talked about, other people have talked about today. How do we know, how do we know we know that? Well, the sheriff has told us. He told us on October 25th, 2016, he was being interviewed by Fox 40. He said, "We have pesticides. The human waste that is being disposed of out in the ground is causing an environmental impact more than anything else. This is what you're seeing in these rooms." And he was talking about also drying rooms. "They're grading without permits, cutting down trees, the pesticides they're using on the plants, it's all going to run down the streams." March 30th, 2017, sheriff's report, found 44 canisters of butane dumped in the Calaveras High School parking lot. I'm sure all of you heard about this. That was sheriff's report. Another report on April 5th, 955-gallon drums of hazardous waste was removed and nearly 1,000 cans of butane were discovered, again, Calaveras High School. And then in May 30th, others have mentioned, Sheriff DeBasilio talked about destruction to our forest land, illegal land conversion, diversion of our streams and waterways, evidence of dangerous, unlawful, highly toxic pesticides, and he mentioned furadan. I didn't know what furadan was. That was my first notice, which I think was probably the notice to all of us, because it was in a public meeting, and to the Board of Supervisors and any of you that may have been watching, that they found this in this county. He believed it's in our watersheds, wells, soils, and he believed it was danger to humans, animals, and the environment. Then on July 7th, a bottle of carboferon, an illegal and extremely dangerous pesticide, was found at the 3,800 block of Dickerson Court in Bursen. Another one. August 3rd, human waste was allowed to flow down our streams, pesticides, containers left uncapped, allowing whatever was left inside to seep out into the watershed. This is not good, folks. September 7th, Union Democrat article, "Toxic Chemicals in Illegal Pot Grows Raise Concerns." Now, people are going to say, well, that's an illegal pot grow. But we all know, water just doesn't stay within the boundaries of one pot grow or the other. Water flows, right? Animals who have been contaminated, they wander around. If they have any workers that are exposed to any of these pesticides, they also may move from site to site. So we, my point here is, and I could go on because there's a lot more issues and incidences where this has been reported, and we have been told we have it here. The problem is, we need to do something about it. We need to do something about it now. In my mind, eradication and remediation must begin immediately. We only have one choice, and that choice is ban it now and mitigate our damages. We have no other choice. We already tried to regulate. That was an abysmal failure. We can't do it anymore. I love this county. I know many of you do. This county is a park. It's a beautiful place. And I don't want anyone to be unsafe, wherever you come from, whether you're growing or not, this is serious business. And I'm asking each one of you to please think about it when you make your decision because we must clean this up. So I'm asking you, and believe that you each have a duty, to forthwith mitigate the damages because also, you've heard some things today, our county employees need safety too, as well as we do. So I recommend, I ask that you each recommend to the Board of Supervisors-
Susan, did you hear the timer?
...that they ban activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we still have a sign-in sheet?
There should be one right up. Did you take the sign-in sheet, Susan? No? He took the full one. Oh, there we go, it's there. Thank you.
I'll sign it afterwards. Joan Wilson, Joan Tanner-Wilson. First of all, thank you for your time. Next, I would like to speak about who I am. I am a grandmother. I am the mother of an Army veteran and another son who is an Eagle Scout. I have a granddaughter. I bring her up to Calaveras County because I love this county. I've been coming here since I was a child. I've brought groups of people up here to enjoy whitewater rafting in your rivers, caving in your caves, and I am finally here, and I am so happy to be here. I want to protect this place because it means a lot to me. I am a farmer. I am an organic farmer, yet I still did go to the agricultural department to get my pesticide license, just in case, just to be proactive, just to learn. And just a few days ago, Justin Rasmussen of the egg department sent out an update of regulations for pesticides and ways that are acceptable to use in the growing of marijuana. Good piece of information. I liked his, I liked the little bit on controlling wolves and gophers with castor oil. I am organic. I do not use any of these pesticides that have been spoken of. I do use my fingers to pick the worms off of my buds, all of that. You want to talk about threats? Please threaten me with litigation because that would be much better than the threats that I have had. I have had people call and disturb my neighbors to let them know that I am there. I am also speaking for, they've told those people, you stay away from her. Those are good neighbors. Don't bother them. I have had people call, and I've had, I've talked to business owners in this county and other people. The reason this room is empty is because they're scared. They are scared of the threats. The business owners are scared of the threats. If they take a side, they've had people come in, in a group, into their business and say, "We will not support your business, and we will keep everybody away." That's a shame. That is a shame, because I think everybody has a right to speak, and everybody has a right to an opinion. As far as the EIR, good faith and reasonable, perceived smell, you ought to go to San Jose, Morgan Hill, Gilroy, because it smells. I'll stop growing cannabis if that's the case, if you ban, or if this county bans. I'll plant garlic and onions instead. The county, not for my neighbors though, I'll give it to them. If this is in good faith and reasonable, the county directed the outcome of the EIR, it appears, and they paid an extra $172,000 for that. Now, I've read four EIRs, and three out of four do not support a ban. Two of those were by the same company, your company. No problem with your company. I understand you did your job. But obviously, after the first speaker, it sounds like you guys have really hard times supporting a ban. It only will work if there's 100% compliance. How many times do we have criminals that follow 100%? If that's the case, the sheriff's going to be out of a job. We won't have any prisons. We're going to have a whole lot of people out of work. As far as history goes, we've had a ban, go back 80 years. There was never 100% compliance. I don't expect 100% compliance now. There's still stills and things like that, but we can certainly make a dent on it. If you were to ban in rural residential, you are going to have to also ban several businesses around my home because they range from grapes to construction to cabinet-making, all kinds of businesses. And as far as the water, cannabis uses less water than grapes. To say that cannabis has brought crime to this county is like saying the grape farmers or the grape growers have brought drunks and crime to this county too, because they grow, and why do they grow? They not only grow for a table grape, but most of them in this county grow for wine, which is a drug. Alcohol is a drug, as I know you know. But that brings drunk driving, criminals, and the like. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Carlos Spojo. I'm a registered grower here in Calaveras. I've been in and out of the meeting all day. I just can't seem to ever get a day off. I'm constantly working, but I've been able to pop in. I heard the sheriff speak a little bit. I've heard a lot of these comments, and, you know, I hear a lot of accusations that I think are really unfair. I know a lot of growers, I have a lot of good friends out here, and, you know, none of us use furadan or those ortho-phosphates that she was talking about. I personally am committed to living organic soil. We're constantly trying to develop the biology in the fields so that they balance themselves out. The way that we grow, we try to do it very efficiently. You know, water is a limited resource. So just like it is for everybody else, we're trying to be very conservative in that sense also. As you build soil, you know, you use less water. These are things that responsible growers do and regulated growers do. There's a lot of these problems that have gotten out of control, and I agree with them. And a lot of these are examples of the way things have been in the past, and the way that they still are, but we still haven't gotten to the point that we need to be for regulation. I think it's really unfair to use this year and a half of timeframe to try to say how things are going to be in the future. If we ban this and we don't regulate, it's just going to be a lot more of the way it's been, really. You know, you have these people who are irresponsible, who don't care, and they're going to stay out there and they're going to keep doing that. I know we've heard that time and time again, but it's a fact. I mean, we can't regulate it all in that way. We can't eliminate growing in this county. What you're going to eliminate is the responsible guys like me. And, you know, we want to do more for this county. We want to be more active in the county. But we're taking really small baby steps right now because this threat of a ban, which still to me, to this day, when I think about it, is absurd. It's so ridiculous when I think about it, that this county, as far as we've come, is still even considering this ban. It doesn't make any sense. I sympathize with the people who have fear and who have been here and have seen the destruction. I sympathize with them. I really, really do. I'm hurt by it also. But we're trying to do things right, you know? We're trying to move forward here, and this talk of ban just limits us. It really just takes us back, instead of trying to advance this and trying to do this the right way. You know, help us help you. We all want the same thing. We want to do this responsibly. We want to do this cleanly. You know, all this talk about pesticides, no one's going to be allowed to use these dangerous pesticides. Once the state finally rolls out their track and trace, we need to submit all of our product through a testing facility. If you have any of these pesticide residues, it's going to get turned away. You're not going to be able to enter the market. Like, that's the answer to that problem. There's, that's already been solved. You know, the state has a lot of this already figured out. Now, just give us time to make it work. You know, we just need some time. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I'm pleading to just, pleading to you guys, please do the right thing here. You know, I'm trying to support my family. I'm trying to support the county, the community. We're trying to do things right. Don't push us away. You want people like me, trust me. We want to do things right, and we want to support you guys. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Vivian Sechu, District 1. I'd like to begin with just reading from an article with regards to Siskiyou County, who basically enacted and adopted a ban in November of 2015, and their sheriff has now declared a state of emergency because they cannot control the amount of illegal grows and the environmental damage and whatnot that's happening in their county as we speak. Siskiyou County Sheriff John Lope says he will ask the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors for a local state of emergency on Tuesday to help combat the rising numbers of illegal marijuana grows in the community. Sheriff Lope says there are more than 2,000 illegal marijuana grows on private lands in Siskiyou County. "We're combating a huge problem. I think it has the potential to be catastrophic," says Lope. Siskiyou County has banned growing marijuana outside since November 2015. Lope says they still do it. He says that while it is illegal- He says that while it is a large problem in rural areas, excuse me, sorry, growers are now moving into neighborhoods. Imagine neighborhoods that have literally hundreds of illicit marijuana grows and most of these average around 99 or 100 plants. So, suddenly you move into a nice neighborhood and suddenly an illegal marijuana garden springs up and ones to your left, to your right, ones in front of you and ones behind you, says Lopey. It's really gone beyond our resources to adequately mitigate this huge problem. It's the social justice and certainly the environmental implications that has Sheriff Lopey already considering an emergency declaration. He cites the toxic chemicals used to keep pests out of illicit illegal grows and other dangerous conditions, including the carbon monoxide deaths of three people sleeping in trailers at illegal grow sites as quality of life issues have gone too far. Lopey is careful to point out that he supports a person's right to legally use the plant, but he doesn't believe the county will ever recover if illegal grows get any more of a foothold. He says there are a lot of fastballs coming at us, like methamphetamine and heroin, but Lopey said illegal pot is the one that's really gotten out of control lately. Lopey's plan also got criticism from marijuana legalization advocates who noted that the county's already tough stance on legal grows is ironically fueling its need for an emergency declaration by encouraging the black market. This is where Calaveras is headed with an unenforceable ban. Siskiyou is a prime example of what will happen to Calaveras under an unenforceable ban. Siskiyou adopted and enacted a ban in November 2015. It's now 2017 and Sheriff Lopey, who stated from the beginning that he had everything under control, has now declared a state of emergency. First and foremost, how well do you think Siskiyou has fared with their ban in the past two years? Is this what we want for Calaveras County? Secondly, given the dire state of the county's finances, where is the money coming from to enforce a ban and to mitigate environmental damages and violations? Responsibly, before you put a project business plan of any sort forward, you must have a financial plan to support it. To this day, no one from the county has been able to answer this question of where is the money coming from? And lastly, banning the industry will cripple the already precarious county finances anyhow, even before considering any funding to support a ban enforcement. Thank you.
Vivian, before you walk away, I just have a quick question. Since you read the article into the record, do you know if they've received help?
They have received, I believe, about two or 2.1 million from federal funding, but that's not going to be enough for them to go after all of the illegal grows there. Their biggest problem right now in Siskiyou is the illegal lawn growers and so they are treading a very fine line.
Okay, I was asking the question only because I've had this statement come from both sides of the room, federal funding's not available, federal funding is. And so, they've banned, they declared an emergency and they have received funding.
They have received about two, I believe it's 2.1 million because of the state of emergency that the supervisors declared. But 2 million is not enough for them to go after all the illegal grows there and it's a one-time fund. So, they can't go and declare it again, you know, the next year.
Is that because of the federal lands? We were told earlier that Siskiyou has 80% federal land. And that's why the feds are supporting the eradication efforts in that county. So, is that why they got the 2 million?
Correct, it's because of the federal land. So, if you were to go towards a ban and let's say the numbers double to like 4,000 or 5,000 illegal grows over the next two years for Calaveras County, you'd have to declare a state of emergency and what you get in is not going to be sufficient for you to even go after the number of those illegal grows.
Hold on, hold on.
Not just that, you have to take into consideration the location of Calaveras County if you were to adopt and enact a ban.
So, I'm going to stop you right there because you answered the question I was looking for and I don't want to get off into anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Tuno, District Five. The previous speaker, a couple of speakers ago, the young man, said that he couldn't find the logic in banning an illegal activity. I'm at a loss for words to explain that logic to him. The previous speaker, this young lady, is talking about the Siskiyou County situation, yet there's nobody here from Siskiyou County to put a perspective on anything she has said. She quoted the sheriff in his asking for emergency help, but nowhere in that article does it say the sheriff says, "We made a mistake. We need to reverse the ban in Siskiyou County." Now, about a year and a half ago, I was sitting up there and you all know why I resigned, because of what the Board of Supervisors did with respect to the urgency ordinance. And this has been going on now for, what, a year and a half, two years of hearings and hundreds and thousands of comments, mostly the same thing over and over again. I think it's a fairly simple question. I wrote to the Board of Supervisors about this. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to try to make it really simple, not because you can't understand a complicated question, but because I think the decision is fairly easy. Marijuana growers are telling you, you either legalize us or we're going to trash this county with illegal activity, which they've already done. A year and a half is not enough for us to get our act together under, under a so-called legal ordinance. Not enough time. The simple question is, you either roll over for the marijuana interest in this county or you stand up to them. That's it. There's right and wrong. You either cave to these people or you stand up to them. I vote for the latter. I hope you do too.
Okay, is there any further public comment?
Hey.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Bob Millier. I don't usually speak at these. I'm a cannabis farmer. I've lived in Calaveras County my entire life. I have a RR property. It's 56 acres. So, when you say, oh, get rid of RR, that makes zero sense. It's not a quarter acre lot. I don't use any pesticides. I didn't know what Furdan was until the sheriff told me. Law-abiding. Just wanted you to know, I'm not a criminal, never have been, never will be. So, I think we need to regulate. If you don't regulate, all you're going to have is criminals, not to mention the lawsuits and the money we bring in. It's the only logical choice. That's all. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
What district are you in?
District Two, Three, One, and Four, but I live in Mountain Ranch.
Afternoon. Robert Chufeld. You know, I have a property. I moved on to it. It's a large rural acreage. I cleaned up a bunch of grow trash that people have been growing in the blackberries there. I don't know how long they've been doing it, but there's definitely evidence of people utilizing the springs and utilizing the creek that flows through there and they weren't registered. I clean that stuff up. I get inspected to register and I'm subject to inspection pretty much anytime. And, you know, I'm a registered grower. I'm there, I'm accountable. People, I think, are getting a little confused when we talk about the realities of a banned situation. The reality is, is not me continuing to grow to support my family. The reality is I'm out of business. The reality is that people move in from outside or they're already here and they expand or they continue the activities that we have not been able to get a hold on, on people's private property or in the forest lands above us, which is also where they seem to be finding the Furdan, which is a point that people keep missing. That is not from a registered grow. We have lists from one of the agencies that regulates us, the agriculture department, that we just all got. It's as of September 22nd. It is a list of acceptable pesticides. It's like clove oil, geranium extract, you know, neem stuff. It's all, it's all very mellow and it's the only stuff we're allowed to use. So, it's pretty, and if they want to come look in our sheds and look in our fields, if we have tipped over pesticides, like the containers I cleaned up out of my creek from the illegal grows that predated me, if we have those laying around, we're in trouble and we're subject to losing our business, which we've spent, some people have spent millions, I think. I don't, I haven't had to spend that much luckily. So, don't, don't get confused by the fear mongering. It isn't about us threatening to just become illegal machine gun toten cartels all of a sudden. That's not our goal. Our goal is to do this right and we will be gone. Other people will fill that void. Nature does not like a vacuum and it will be bad. It will look like Siskiyou County under a ban if we ban. That is where we're headed. I have a downstream neighbor. He leases my property to run cattle on it everywhere but my little half acre. He's got his cows running around. He's not worried at all about what we're up to. It's not affect, like the registered grows are not negatively affecting the environment. And to the point of the EIR, all the, all the unregistered activity is going to be impossible to mitigate. If we don't have, you know, you come and look at my site and you can tell me if I've done something wrong. I don't think we have because I bought a couple reams of paper to get registered, to prove all of our compliance. You know, but you can check it out and you can find it, but unregistered grows, you can't help them and there's no responsible party to mitigate the issues and remediate the environmental damage. But with the registered grows and our tax money, you can fix what these bad actors are out there doing that we all don't like. They are the ones that trash us. They are the ones that use banned chemicals. We do right things. I talk to my neighbors. They know how to get in touch with me. It's not rocket science and it's, it's pretty simple. The best thing we can do for our environment and for our county is to not stick our heads in the sand and act like a ban is going to fix this. There are ways, there is compromise. We've been working on it. There's plenty of compromise to be had that is not the full-on ban. And I don't think the facts of the EIR actually support a ban. And I think that's very apparent when you read it and you see, because I can fix smells. You can have increased setbacks. You can make a smell stop. My farm, I have four local boys who grew up here. They don't travel that far. They travel maybe two miles as the crow flies. They're not part of this traffic problem. There's not 15 guys driving up from Stockton. You know, the, the, you know, the problems that were deemed unfixable are not unfixable. It's insane. There, it's, there's like proven technology and there's other situations that are not accurately characterized by their study. And I think we need to keep an eye on that. And I've, you know, so have a good day.
Okay, don't walk away because you said something that you knew I was going to ask about. How are you going to stop the smells?
There's, there's, there's a lot of ways. If you have an enclosed greenhouse, you could do, there's ways of smelling it. There's other...
So, you're suggesting indoors?
No, 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 greenhouses. Or there's a, they do, there's a lot of industries that do it. I think you can do like an essential oil misty thing that will, your air goes past this misty oil thing. And if you do the baseline study on smells like that earlier gentleman was talking about, you can kind of tell what the PPMs of the stinky ganja smell is from far away. You can adjust your little thingies. Smells like fresh cut grass. Geranium oil, we could probably do something with geranium oil, fix our pests and make it smell better. But there's also increased setbacks would do, would do larger parcels, you know, larger parcels with increased setbacks. It's not going to smell if you're not in five acre.
Thank you. How many speakers do we have left? Two. Okay, gotcha.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Cliff Edson. I'm a resident of San Andreas, been here for about 14 years and own a business here. And, you know, earlier, one of the, one of the folks talked about how businesses are afraid to come in and speak. And I'll tell you from experience, it's absolutely true. And I seen a whole bunch of heads over here bobbing, oh no, they can't believe it. I'm telling you that I have been threatened repeatedly in my business. My business has been threatened repeatedly because I have a different opinion than somebody else does. That is not a joke. It's taken my business away and it's actually caused me to lay off people just because I don't agree with somebody else. Is that the way that we want to live in this county? Is that freedom? Is that what our country is all about? So, you're looking at the slides, the pictures that the sheriff was talking about on Furdan was from a cartel bust in 1990. That's what that slide was. Why? Because I got the slides four years ago to do a presentation on watershed management. Same slides. And it was a big mess, big mess. And I'll tell you that a lot of these folks that came to the county because of Prop 64 and because they're, because they were getting scared too, because of all of the pressure that was being put on them and their operations. And they were trying to be compliant, they were trying to do good things for, for the community and trying to act right. And they were getting pressured from people that aren't such good actors. Another reason for regulation, that Furdan and all those pesticides, those creeks that are being altered, these folks that register are being inspected. They weren't being inspected before. They were doing things right. That's why they chose to come forward. The folks that didn't come forward, the folks that are illegal, chose not to come forward. Why? Because they're the ones that really don't give a crap about anything that goes on except making a dollar. Businesses, I've talked to 54, 55 businesses now in the county, 55. None of them will come forward. They're afraid of scrutiny. They're afraid of being, being scrutinized by the folks that come into their business and tell them, if you, if you get, speak your mind basically, we will make sure that you lose business. Just like earlier, we heard about somebody that might lose their appointment as supervisor because they don't follow what somebody says. Traffic. The EIR had no baseline for traffic. Zero. So, what do you use for a baseline? Was it from 1955 when we actually had some industry in the county? No, I don't think so. Or did you use zero as a baseline? That means no industry, no traffic? What did you use? You used one farm? Do you know that that one farm also has two or three other grows? So, therefore you would divide the number 15 into three or four? The EIR is faulted and I'll tell you right now, if it becomes a document, it will fail in court. And again, we'll get sued and waste a whole bunch of money like we're doing now. Home values. Well, I don't know what, what some of these people are talking about home values, losing value on their homes, because I have this old 1893 Victorian that is dilapidated and it has increased almost 50% in the past four years. Look at all of these folks, the businesses, the 55 businesses that I talked about, every one of them are employing more people now. Four years ago, they were looking for work and they were running it themselves. Every one of them, every single one of those folks are buying equipment and, and running more people as, as employees in their company. That means we, our local people here are working, not in, just in the cannabis industry, but in every facet of the industry of construction. They're building homes, they're building garages, they're moving dirt around, they're doing construction, they're putting people to work, electricians, plumbers and everybody else. What happens when you take that away? What's, what's to take its place? And then guess what happens? The businesses like mine go down the tubes. Again, I've already lived that. Most of these folks that are up here talking, they don't care. You know what they're doing? They're sitting on a retirement or they're, or they're... know what they're doing? They're sitting on a retirement or they're, or they're not working. What are they doing? Young families, people that have to work, they have to do something. Do you want them to, to leave the county like they've been doing for the past 30 years? And bleed us out? Try to go and find somebody to work up here now. It's very difficult. And it has been for, for the 14 years we've been here. Because they leave our county, there's no opportunity here. There's nothing here. So, compromise, I think, is the answer. The EIR is flawed. It is not going to pass muster. There is no baseline for you to, for, for the, the answers that came out of it. Didn't even consider the fact that we did have illegal grows. When, when I first got into office, went on a flight with the sheriff and...
So, I'm going to interrupt you for a second Cliff, because I kept waiting for her timer to go off and it didn't. And mine says you're into six minutes.
Okay, I'll stop right now then.
Thank you. Sorry. I kept looking going, what is going on with that timer?
I think I gave you an extra 20.
It seemed kind of long for me too.
Um, okay. There was some more in the back there, I believe.
Good afternoon. Beth Whitkey, District 2. Registered cannabis farmer. I want to thank all of you for your time. I want to acknowledge how much time you have put into the appeals and the difficult task of creating this program out of nothing. You know, we, um, it's not easy to craft public policy. And I think that this is in its infancy and that people need to be more patient and allow regulations to work. We only just got Measure C funds in the last couple of months to start going after illegal actors. I find it very puzzling that cannabis is the only pollution source, if you hear some people talk, in a county with a mining legacy, with a logging legacy, and that it's just come off three disasters or we're coping with three disasters. It is impossible that all of this pollution is coming from plants and from the cultivation of these plants. We know that the Butte Fire caused major pollution. We have to acknowledge that when we test the water. The same with all of the other ag and the mining legacy and the logging legacy in the county. There are no baselines in this EIR that acknowledge that Calaveras has been polluted for a very long time. The only way to mitigate that pollution, in my opinion, and to minimize it, is to allow for regulated cannabis cultivation and taxation so that there is funding for law enforcement, code, compliance, environmental health, et cetera. I feel like so much of this is a culture war and it's the people who don't approve of the activity versus the people that would like to embrace a new industry in the county. So, I would like for us all to stop fighting. I would like for us to come up with a good compromise. And I would like for us to move forward in rebuilding the county. Many of us are still struggling from the Butte Fire. My neighborhood, we lost 50 homes. Mine was one of five that survived. However, my entire property burned. I have seasonal creeks. I have year-round creeks. I never had a problem with erosion before the fire. Last year, during the winter storms, my entire front yard, or half of it flowed, flowed down the hill. That's from the fire. We did everything we could to mitigate erosion, but we had a second disaster in the storms. So, I'm tired of feeling demonized by the ban proponents. I'm a grandmother. I'm a concerned citizen. I volunteer in the community. I donate time and money in the community. And I would like to not be put out of business by a flawed EIR. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any last speakers? Yeah, if you're gonna, if you're gonna be speaking, maybe you can move forward so we don't have to wait so long in between speakers. Otherwise, please, thank you. No, we're not doing that.
My name's Jennifer Smith. I'm a resident of Districts 1, 2, and 3. I've been listening to this all day, kind of gather my thoughts, but I've added to it, so it's a little fractured. I will say one thing. It looks like both sides finally agree on something. This EIR is flawed. I don't think it passes the muster. I think the ban proponents have found some flaws with it and the cannabis farmers have found some flaws with it. And I'd like us to find a document that works from baselines that we can establish. Our cannabis baseline is not even established because we're not through vetting all of the farms. I think at some point, we need to get to a point where we know how many farms we're talking about. How many legal farms do we have in this county? How much acreage is it taking up? It's time to find some middle ground towards regulation. We need to stop with the absolutes and absolute ban and absolute letting us farm everywhere. There's middle ground to be found. We need to quit being divisive. We need to come together as a county and create a sustainable, long-lasting industry in this county. We need to do it the right way. We need to market successfully and professionally and elevate the name Calaveras. And not just with cannabis, but Calaveras as a whole. We are being held hostage by this conversation. We have other issues that we need to discuss. We need to discuss a general plan. How do you create regulation based on a general plan that's outdated? And we still have a general plan that's pending. I'd like us to quit with the hyperbole from both sides. I'd like us to quit with the he said, she said. Let's have some conversations. Let's look at counties like Yolo. Let's look at Humboldt. They've had very successful groups, stakeholder groups with proponents from both sides to come up with a policy that works. Let's use these examples and follow their lead. Let's talk about legal farms. Everybody says that legal farms are just as guilty as illegal farms. Let me tell you, I am not going to risk my state license by doing anything illegal. There is a list of pesticides that are allowed. That's what I'm going to use. I'm not going to risk my state license on that. Our testing standards are to the parts per billion. Amen farmers don't have the testing standards that we have. Again, your legal farms are not going to risk their license. The CCA has over 200 members. They're not just farmers. They're industry supporters. We are teaching our people the best practices. We're bringing in labor lawyers to give seminars. The EDD was there to explain what we have to do with our employees. Are they an employee or are they a contract employee? We are trying to do the right thing and make this a sustainable industry for Calaveras so that we can continue to generate money for this county. We asked about, you asked the question about smell. The state and CSAC have approved odor controls. You can use carbon filters in greenhouses that mitigate the odors. Let's look at those options. Let's look at setbacks from a residence. Let's not talk about property lines. If somebody opens their window, let's measure that distance. There is compromises to be made. Let's find our baseline of what we're talking about. Let's get a competent EIR and let's find some common ground so we can stop fighting and move this county forward. That's my wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you might start playing that wooden music because you didn't do what I said. I'm sorry, time's up. No, I'm kidding. I had asked you to come forward, so I didn't do that. He doesn't listen.
Sorry. I came a little ways. So, hello, Planning Commission Trevor Whitkey, District 2 Resident, Calaveras Cannabis Alliance Executive Director. A couple of things. The environmental impacts referred to today by the ban proponents are not associated with registered cultivation sites regulated under the Water Quality Control Board's General Order, the Urgency Ordinance, or the proposed ordinance before you. Calaveras County Environmental Health, the Calaveras Sheriff's Department, Calaveras Code Enforcement have all reported that the registered grows do not have the associated environmental hazards that are documented in relation to illicit cultivation. Therefore...
Now, Trevor, I'm going to stop you for one second. I apologize and reset the clock, do whatever you have to do. Every single one of us are going, we don't even know what you're saying. So, I understand you have a message to give, but we're not getting it because you're going so fast. It's not registering and I apologize.
No, I will slow down and speak more clearly into the mic.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting you.
It's okay. I'm dealing with a head cold from the two-year-old, so I'm also very nasal. Okay, so, the environmental impacts referred to today by the ban proponents are associated with illicit cultivation. Specifically, multiple county staff have come out and said during the May 30th, June 6th, and June 20th study session meetings that were held by the Board of Supervisors, that the carbophuradan, the organophosphates, and all of the illicit pesticides that are being used are being found on illicit cultivation sites. They're not being found on the regulated cultivation sites when the Department of Agriculture comes out and does their inspections or when the environmental health does their inspections. Therefore, the impacts are only associated with illicit cultivation operations. The EIR concedes, or rather acknowledges, that illicit cultivation operations are likely to increase under the ban alternative for two reasons. One, there's a financial incentive for illicit cultivators to break the law and make money. Prohibition has shown an inability to stop this activity over the last 70 years. Additionally, there is the fact that the county is going to lose considerable resources. $7 million was provided to the county in the first installment of taxes, Measure C taxes. Those funds can be used for eradication and they are in fact being used for eradications right now. A million dollars was dedicated to that purpose through the demolition contracts that were created through the county. So, what we see is a situation in which the impacts that are being articulated by the ban or proponents are actually going to be created by the alternative that they are advocating. This is acknowledged in Alternative 2, Chapter, subsection 2 of Chapter 6 of the draft EIR. Beyond the fact that illicit cultivation is likely going to exacerbate the associated impacts that are being identified by the ban proponents, there are issues with the draft EIR or the EIR itself. I'm concerned with several omissions that are contained within the EIR. The draft EIR failed to quantify the number of pre-existing operations under the baseline condition of April 5th, 2016. I am one of those operations. Everything that I have done on my property and everything that I put in my agenda, in my packet to the county indicated that I've been operating on that property since 2005 and I have not done any expansion or development since 2011. All of my operations predate the urgency ordinance and predate the NOP for the draft EIR and are in fact baseline condition. This is true of many farms. This number was not quantified. This number should be subtracted from the overall number of 750 new registrants that they, or total registrants that they assume under the project. Furthermore, the draft EIR failed to quantify and evaluate the number and effects of illicit cultivation in the baseline condition and subsequently. In addition to this, the draft EIR failed to quantify what the level of odorous emissions surpasses the threshold of significance. Dr. Sullivan talked about this earlier. And if we were to have a scientific baseline where we could actually say, this is the point at which an impact is created, then we would be able to say, okay, the setback scientifically should be this much from an adjacent property or an adjacent house as opposed to just guesstimating. Furthermore, the draft EIR failed to quantify traffic data supporting the conclusions that the project would result in significant unavoidable impacts. This was identified in an expert letter that was presented on behalf of CCA. It was also indicated in Caltrans' letter in response to the draft EIR. None of these deficiencies have been corrected in the final EIR or in the responses to the letters that have been provided. For these reasons, there are clear omissions and deficiencies in this document that leave it susceptible to considerable legal challenge. The draft EIR also contains a pretty considerable logical inconsistency. The EIR conclusion that a ban alternative is environmentally superior option analyzed by the EIR contradicts the available information and analysis contained within the EIR itself. The EIR assumes 750 cultivation operations under the long-term implementation of the project because that is the number of applicants under the urgency ordinance. This number should be considerably less because of the already pre-existing baseline operations such as my own and many others. And all of that data is available in our registrant packets and that should be included in this analysis to determine the baseline. Furthermore, it is also, Alternative 3 and Alternative 4 would substantially reduce the number even more behind, beyond 750. So, unfortunately, I ran out of time.
I have a question for you. You've had a chance to look at the worksheet I did.
Yes.
Is there something in there that you could not live with?
I have vetted it through the membership and we do operate on the basis of trying to propose everything to our members and see what they can live with.
But unfortunately, we're, we're doing decisions today.
Yes.
As an individual farmer...
As an individual farmer, for my own farm, there's nothing that I couldn't live with in those proposed alternatives. I think that that is a wonderful starting point for us to consider regulations and to consider a discussion on proposed regulations that could go to the board.
Thank you.
Okay. I see nobody lined up, which means we're going to be closing public comment unless there's anybody that wants to stand up at the last minute. I want everybody to have their opportunity. No, I'm sorry. I can assure you, we'll vet it out up here though. Okay, so, let's take a 15-minute break, let everybody get a chance to use the restroom, and then we will come back and start deliberations here with the commissioners. They could please take their seats. Okay. I want to thank all of you for participating in the public comment. We appreciate your participation. I am going to go to staff's table and we are going to ask the consultants here for the EIR and give them an opportunity to speak to all sides of this room because there was a lot of questions on both sides on the EIR. So, I'm going to give them an opportunity to talk to the commissioners and back up all their documentation for us. So, if you would like to start, that would be great.
Good. Very good. Hello, I'm Gary Jacobs with the Cent Environmental and I guess I can say I'm very proud that we brought everybody together today in a unifying theme of not liking our EIR. So, thank you guys. Nothing personal. That's right. So, I want to address a few of the issues that were raised and then we're open to answer any questions that, that might be left on the table that you guys have on the commission. One thing that I want to start by saying though is we're evaluating an industry that is fairly new. There's not a lot of published data. So, when we set about doing the EIR, we looked at analogous situations. We looked at published information. And there's a lot of information about Calaveras County, but there's not a lot of information about the cannabis industry standards, things like that. So, there's a lot of assumptions built into the EIR. There were comments on those assumptions and we did try to address them as we were evaluating comments and responses to them. One of the questions that's been raised a lot is a question of baseline and illegal grows and did we consider them in the baseline? Baseline under SEQA is a little bit more complicated than that. Baseline is the environmental conditions that exist at the time that an EIR is initiated. That's what the SEQA definition of a baseline is. In Calaveras County, that's 100... In Calaveras County, that's 150 years of change. So, that's gold mining, residential development, gravel mining, logging, all kinds of things, illegal activities from cannabis. So, that all forms the baseline. We didn't go out and count illegal cannabis activities, just like we didn't count all the logging grows. This EIR did not set out to become a catalog of the entire county. That's not what it was about. What it was looking at is the environmental impacts of establishing a new ordinance to regulate cannabis grows and a ban on cannabis grows. Those are the two things that we looked at in the EIR. Is it informed by illegal activities? Sure. Illegal activities that are occurring, the illegal grows, certainly informed a lot of the information, such as when we talk about the ban ordinance. So, that is in there. But we didn't go out and count exactly how many illegal grows there are. We do have information, anecdotal information in the EIR that talks about that. But what is relevant is what would the environmental effects be of development under the ordinance? And what would the environmental effects be when we did the alternatives analysis of the various alternatives, including the ban ordinance? Just wanna make sure that that's clear. I know that it's conceptual, but that's what EIRs are about. It's evaluating projects and putting projects on top of the environment, not cataloging all the ills of the past.
Could we ask a question before we move on to another subject?
Yes, yes.
I still don't quite grasp, when you say the environmental effects of the proposed ordinance, if indeed there, let's say we knew there were 1,000 farms in existence at the date that the EIR was started, was that taken into account at all in looking at, you're guessing at, or estimating what the number of new farms would be and their environmental effect? I would think it would be new farms, not all farms, starting with the farms that were in existence when the EIR started, plus the new ones.
Right.
I hope I'm making myself clear.
You're making yourself very clear, and that's an excellent, excellent question. So, what, it's a little complicated because of the situation in Calaveras County with all the illegal activity, the fact that an urgency ordinance was initiated after the notice of preparation was released, there were a bunch of applications that came in, still being evaluated. The baseline is, for purposes of this EIR, is the assumed number of new operations that would occur under the ordinance.
But new being that didn't exist before?
Not necessarily. So, that would come into play under the ordinance. It's very complicated, but it's not entirely relevant, and I'm gonna say that, because there's only one, there's only one environmental issue in this whole EIR that really comes into play when we're looking at how many operations were in existence before, how many new ones, and all that, and that's traffic, which is an issue that everybody commented on, and I'll get to in a moment. Everything else is, we're just looking at an operation, what would happen if the operation would occur under the ordinance, what would the environmental effects of that operation be, and how do you mitigate those effects? So, coming into compliance with it, it's the same, the same standards, the same conditions would apply, they're folded into the ordinance, all new operations would need to comply with that. So, when you're looking at, well, are the environmental impacts of, what are the environmental impacts of these, the illegal operations versus the new operations, we're looking at a projected number of new operations that would be subject to the ordinance, and the conditions that would be placed upon them, and whether there would be impacts, but the mitigation measures that are attendant upon that.
I hesitate to look like I'm beating a dead horse here. The, so, we have one farm, let's say, one farm that by definition was illegal because it wasn't legal before. And the EIR date comes in, okay. And is that farm treated as a new farm? Or is it, is it really not, is this more conceptual? Is it that you expect there to be 600 farms in a year if this ordinance comes in, and it really doesn't make a difference whether they were in existence before or a year later?
So, it's an excellent question. What the, any farm that comes in or that operates legally in the county will be required to comply with the standards of the ordinance, including the mitigation measures in this EIR, if it is adopted as such. So, whether it's an existing operation or not, in order for it to be legal, will have to comply with the ordinance standards.
But its effects on the environment would be measured from the time that the ordinance comes into effect, or the EIR is stated?
In theory, yes, but if it's an existing operation that wants to be, if, let me, let me try to be, give an example. If an operation in Mountain Ranch, if there's been an operation out, and that applicant comes in, has been operating illegally, wants to operate legally, are you gonna go out and evaluate the impacts of that? Well, under the ordinance, it's a ministerial action, they will be required to comply with all the conditions in the ordinance, including the mitigation measures that would be folded into the ordinance. So, there's not gonna be a new evaluation of the impacts of that, of that specific operation. They'll be required to comply with all the conditions.
Certainly, but their effect on the environment, which is what I think we're talking about, is treated as a new effect on the environment. It isn't, they don't, they're not treated as, well, this was in effect before, so that the effects they had on the environment before have some bearing on this. It's as if everybody who started farming after the date of the EIR is all in the same boat with the same people as far as the effects on the environment as the people that were farming before.
In effect. In other words, they will have to comply. They don't get grandfathered in.
No, I know, it's, you're talking compliance, and I'm talking about the effect. I understand there are a duty to comply. I'm just trying to get the concept of this baseline as to, is it just a date, or do you really look at what was in existence as of that date?
Right. So, if an operation's in effect, does this EIR say that operations' impacts have already occurred? It doesn't do that. This is a programmatic environmental impact report. We're looking at hundreds of thousands of acres of where cannabis could occur, cannabis operations could occur, so we're, you know, as a baseline, we don't know where it's going to be exactly. It's not, it's not just the applications that have been submitted so far, applications can happen in the future. So, we're just trying to conceptually, you know, as a program EIR, we're trying to give that kind of...
I think I'm getting the concept, thank you. I think the term baseline is what throws you off, throws me off.
So, I'm just gonna, just for simplicity for myself, what you're saying is this is relating to effects going into the future. It's not going, looking backwards at what's already there, right?
Correct. We're not, the EIR is not, it's not looking backwards.
Okay, so, we're, got it. So, it's the effects going into the future. I think we're clear now, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item.
Well, if you could just tell me what the date of the EIR is, that would help me. What's the date you're looking at?
The NOP was April 5th, 2016.
So, April 5th, 2016 is when the notice of preparation was released? That's the baseline for purposes of SEQA. It's not entirely, it's not, it's not a line in the sand, it's just what is called the baseline. But the important thing is, as environmental impacts are concerned, as operations are concerned, in order to get into compliance with the permit, all operations would need to implement all those mitigation measures in the EIR, or they would be illegal operations. Okay? Going through some of the issues, odors, there was a, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into a lot of detail. One of the earlier questions was, the EIR said perception of odors is an impact, and how could that be? Odors are very difficult, they're subjective. The modeling that the gentleman, Mr. Sullivan, mentioned is related to parts per million of particulates. This is very complex modeling. It doesn't lend itself to modeling in an area where there's a lot of topography, where there's variation of where one property is, and whether it's surrounded by one, or two, or three, or four different operations. It just doesn't lend itself to that kind of modeling. Odors have never lent themselves to modeling. They are a perceptive issue. It's objectionable to some people, it's not objectionable to others. We assumed that odors would be objectionable, and that's why we indicated that there would be significant impacts. As to the distance that one needs to be, again, it's a very dynamic issue. Obviously, the greater the setback, the less the possibility of somebody perceiving odors. And that, that's it. But the time of year, the wind conditions, all kinds of things affect odors, and the distance that odors travel. And so, we did identify that as a significant effect. We didn't model it. Modeling would have been a, it would have been a very expensive, and frankly, would not have been a fruitful exercise. It would not have informed this EIR any, any better than, than what the analysis says. Traffic generation, there was questions about both the baseline that we use for traffic and the number of employees that we assumed. We did address that in response to comments. Yes, we did visit one operation here, but we also looked at data about typical employee numbers at cannabis operations throughout a year. We looked at what the peak would be. I will say that the traffic analysis is very conservative. There is a baseline. The baseline is the most recent time when comprehensive counts in the county were done, which was in 2012 as part of the Calaveras County Regional Transportation Plan. That was used as our baseline. We hand modeled, there's not a model that goes with a project like this, where we've got dispersed land uses of, small land uses throughout a county, so we hand modeled, and we assumed where people may, where people live, and where people would likely drive based on residence locations and that sort of thing. We identified significant impacts. However, the mitigation measure is based on the actual number of employees that would be associated with an operation, and this would be part of the application and part of the truthing that would go into determining what mitigation would be. It's a payment of a fee, and that's what's used to mitigate traffic impacts. Lot of comments about Alternative Two.
Oh, excuse me.
I have a lot of questions on that traffic, too.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just, I haven't read any comment that agreed with the number of employees that you've said. And even the, the person whose grow you've visited has his own comments in the comments that says, that isn't what I was, I must have been misunderstood. I'm just wondering, you seem, I don't know what basis you have for the 10 to 15 employees.
Right. Chris, if you could help me on that data.
So, what we did in terms of the employee data, we had actually looked at, I could look up what the actual citation is, I can't remember the source offhand, but it was a publication of marijuana cultivation businesses. And we used their 2016 data, which turns out also made it into the statewide EIR that came out. And it said for a range of cultivation activities coming from, and I think it was 10,000 to 50,000 square feet, which was what was cited by Mr. Sullivan earlier, the average number of employees, I think they said it was 14. And so, based on a conversation we had had with county staff and with other, I believe it was actually two growers in Calaveras County, we came up with the range of 10 to 15. But also, through that coordination with those cultivators, the number of trips we actually reduced based on what they said was being, in terms of employees being shared between different cultivation sites, as well as employee, carpooling, essentially that there would be an average vehicle ridership of two people. So, while 15 was the higher bound of number of employees, we assumed that there would be two people per car, and that not all the cultivation would be happening at the same time at each and every grow, that they would actually be shared between different sites.
So, did you take, like, delivery trucks, heavy trucks, equipment, traffic into consideration as well, water delivery trucks when you were doing this, or did you just look strictly at employees, putting two in a vehicle? Because I, these numbers are not working for me. Help me out here. It's not working.
Again, they're very general.
Okay.
It's a general number. The, and it's based on peak traffic, so...
What's peak?
So, peak is when the, it's the peak of the operating...
October?
Sorry. It's based on the roadway peak and the peak of the harvest season. So, you may have, say, 10 vehicles or 20 vehicles per day, but if half of them are driving in the middle of the day, they don't adversely affect the roadway because that's not the peak of the roadway use. So, we also imposed cars on the road based on peak. We assumed, and it's a very conservative analysis, it assumes that employees are gonna arrive and depart during the peak hour of the roadway system. So, that puts the maximum effect. It's, without, without other information, again, you have to, you have to appreciate that this is, this is programmatic. We're trying to come up with reasonable assumptions for a use that's not well documented. If, if the planning commission or the Board of Supervisors disagrees with the assumptions, and I'm saying this in the way of, you're very free to do that, the mitigation can be adjusted. But what the mitigation measures are based on is a fee based on number of employees. So, trucks and things like that, no, we didn't specifically add or take them away, we just tried to have a general, general number that we felt was a conservative estimate of traffic from each operation.
And when, when you use the term conservative in this context, do you mean...
High.
Low?
By conservative, we mean conservative in terms of environmental protection. We err on the side of overstating impacts.
Oh, overstating.
Overstating.
That's what I mean by conservative. My apologies for not stating that earlier.
Right.
That is what I mean. Whenever we use the word conservative in, when we're talking about an impact analysis, we are erring on the side of environmental protection.
You are conserving the environment with your conservative.
Right. There we go.
Okay.
Okay, on Alternative Two, there were a lot of comments about Alternative Two and about the EIR's assumption that Alternative Two is the environmentally superior alternative, and comments that there are illegal grows. We did try to, to address this issue in the EIR. Again, SEQA is not, SEQA is not a law enforcement mechanism. SEQA is trying to disclose impacts. We assume compliance as a general rule. Otherwise, SEQA is not a useful tool. We have to assume compliance with the mitigation measures in the EIR that would apply to new uses. So, we're also assuming, as a baseline, that there will be compliance with a ban ordinance. Does that mean there will be compliance with a ban ordinance? There are illegal activities. You're asking us, people are asking us to speculate on whether or not there will be illegal activities, and how much illegal activity there will occur. To the degree there are illegal activities that do not comply with the regulations, they will cause more environmental impacts than activities that comply with the environmental regulations and that comply with ordinance conditions. That's, you know, that's factual.
So, as I understand it, then you assume compliance because that's what SEQA asks you to do. And so, when we're evaluating the sufficiency of the EIR, we should also assume compliance. But once we move away from the EIR and decide what's best for the county, we're not stuck with that assumption.
Correct. I'm gonna say, we're trying as best we can to have a full disclosure document. So, we are saying that, and we say... So we are saying that, and we say very clearly that it is speculative to determine how many illegal grows may continue if there is a ban ordinance in place, whether there will be more, whether there will be less. We just don't know that, and we'd be, we would not be truthful if we came up with a specific number.
As I understand it, I mean, you do mention and recognize that there will be violations. When I first read the EIR, I thought they're going, they're having this both ways. As I understand it, you're recognizing that that might happen, but in reaching your evaluation as to what is the most, the preferable environmental alternative, you must assume that there is basic compliance with, would be basic compliance with a ban. Am I, am I have this right?
Well, that's what we're assuming in the analysis. We're also providing information in the analysis that says that may not be the case. In determining what the environmentally superior alternative is, we're doing that based on feasibility. We're assuming feasibility. Is a ban a feasible alternative? Well, the county is certainly considering a ban, so it's a feasible alternative. But the county may ultimately decide that it's infeasible also because of, and SEQA lays out the reasons why an alternative can be found feasible or infeasible. Legal, economic, social, technological, there's all kinds of reasons why an alternative can be found to be infeasible, but on its surface, it's potentially feasible. So, but there's...
Assuming compliance.
Yeah, well...
Yeah. Thank you.
Regarding the Humboldt EIR that, and I'm the principal in charge of that one, too, so I can speak to that. Why does that one say that a ban ordinance is infeasible and this one say a ban ordinance is feasible? And the answer is based on what the lead agency, in that case Humboldt County, has as its objectives. Its objectives are very different. Its objectives are to regulate cannabis operations, to regulate both commercial and medical and recreational uses, and that is its fundamental objective. So banning that is inconsistent with that objective. Banning the use of cannabis in Humboldt County is fundamentally adverse. It's contradictory to the basic objective of that ordinance. That's why it's infeasible.
But the proposed ordinance that forms the basis for your study is, the goal was regulation.
In...
So, I mean, you assumed a shift in the goal of the county?
In Calaveras County? The, are you talking about...
I'm talking about the...
Our EIR here?
The ordinance that was the subject of the ban, subject of the EIR to start with, the ban is just an alternative to...
Right. So the... So the object, the objective, thank you. So the objectives of Calaveras County are different than the objectives of Humboldt County. The objectives of Calaveras County, as we say in the EIR, and you can go to page 2-6, are to regulate premises within the county used for marijuana cultivation. I'm summarizing. So, regulate, maintain health, safety, and well-being of the county, minimize risks and complaints associated with unregulated cultivation, protect the county's surface and groundwater resources by reducing the discharge of sediments, pesticides, fertilizers, et cetera, and in the comprehensively regulate premises within the county used for marijuana cultivation or commercial activities related to marijuana, or to prohibit those uses within the constraints of state law. So those are objectives that the county has stated in its EIR, and that is why...
And Humboldt's was different than that in some major respect?
Humboldt's was different, and I will, if you give me a moment, because I did call Of course, when I want to look at it, it takes a minute to load. It loaded very quickly earlier. We're going to look for it while we're...
Okay. So while you're looking for that, let me just reach for some clarity here, because what you just read to me is the, what the goal was...
Objectives.
Pardon me?
So SEQA requires that the objectives of the project are laid out.
Okay.
So I just read...
Those objectives were, they sounded like to support the urgency ordinance, correct? Because those objectives weren't to support a ban. Permanent ordinance, pardon me. I don't even know what one of those looks like yet.
Let me just read the very first objective, because that's what's most important. "Comprehensively regulate premises within the county used for marijuana cultivation or commercial activities related to marijuana, or to prohibit those uses within the constraints of state law."
I'm concerned that when you started talking about Humboldt and distinguishing Calaveras, that somehow the goal of the county, if the county was slanted toward a ban at the beginning, then somehow the EIR, and this is what I'm taking from what you said, the EIR would try to make that fit. If the goal is regulation, the EIR would try to make that fit. I want you to clarify that and prove me absolutely wrong.
Sure. So what SEQA requires that we do is evaluate the impacts of a proposed project to establish what the objectives of that project are. And when we're doing them for a public agency, the public agency provides us with, we work with the agency on what those objectives are, so the fundamental purposes or objectives are. And then when we look at alternatives, the alternatives are required under SEQA to meet, to attain most of the basic objectives, those are the words, attain most of the basic objectives that are laid out in the EIR. So those are the constraints that we work with. The objective provided here, I read, is to regulate or to ban. Those are the objectives. Okay? That's the county's objective. In Humboldt, the fundamental objectives are different. In Humboldt, it's expand the scope of their existing ordinance to include commercial marijuana operations for adult recreation use, now authorized by another regulation, under the same general regulations, blah, blah, blah. So it goes on from there. Okay? It's just a different project.
Point of order, real quick, point of order.
Is it a point of order, or are you asking a question?
Well, my point of order is that what he's saying is not accurate because there's...
That's not a point of order, that's discussion. I'm going to ask you to refrain.
Maybe to help clarify that, if you look at an EIR for a project, say, 200 unit subdivision, the objectives of the project is to build a subdivision. And you don't create alternatives that have it as a wildlife preserve or something entirely different. You look at maybe alternatives within the layout of the subdivision or perhaps a number of units, but you don't come up with a completely different thing. And that's the basis of the analysis. In this case, the basis of the analysis was to both, to look at both a regulatory ordinance and a ban. Where in Humboldt County, a ban was not on the table. They were not going to ban it. And that's why the analysis and the conclusion that was, come up with differed between Humboldt and Calaveras County.
So even though, I don't see the word "ban" appearing in the objectives...
Prohibit.
Or prohibit, I'm sorry. I won't quibble about that. Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. Was this objective, that's only the first of four, those four objectives were given to you sometime in May or April of 2016?
I don't recall the exact timing of when we developed the objectives, but as you're all fully aware, the board is considering a ban.
That's my point.
So, in effect, what this EIR is covering, the disposition of cultivation in the county. Either you will ban it, or you will regulate it. And this EIR covers both. Should we move on?
Move on, please.
I believe I covered most everything. The, there was a lot of testimony about certain kinds of pesticide use, organo-phosphates. Thank you, Chris. And the, both the ordinance and the mitigation measures are very clear that those are not allowable pesticides. There was testimony provided by some of the growers that talked about the sort of pesticides that are legal and are allowed to be used, and the EIR does address that. And so the highly toxic chemicals that have been used on illegal operations would not There was a claim that the, any revisions to the ordinance would require recirculation of the EIR. Under SEQA, EIRs would need to be circulated if there's what's called significant new information that results in a new significant environmental impact that cannot be mitigated. We don't see that that circumstance exists here.
So if a new alternative did not involve new facts with new types of impacts, a new alternative or changes of some of the alternatives would be sufficient without a need for resubmitting?
So long as we can determine that the environmental impacts were already addressed, then it does not need to be recirculated. That, I believe, is, at least, those are my notes.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any further questions?
Yes, I have. Is it not true that under the draft environmental impact report, that you assume that illegal cultivation is likely to occur under any of the alternatives considered in this EIR? That'd be on page 6-6.
That'd be an accurate statement.
And so your assumption was that you would have, are likely to have illegal activity under a regulation, just as you assumed you would likely have illegal activity under a ban.
That's correct.
But for purposes of evaluating the impacts in both cases, you were required to assume
We are assuming that the ordinance, that people who comply with the, people who would receive a permit, who would apply for a permit under the ordinance, would then comply with the ordinance.
Is that it, down the line? So the only question that I think is lingering, because I'm worried about the two sides in the conversations during discussions earlier today, was, on this EIR, we started out with regulation, and then we went to ban, and were there two, you want to hear me? Sorry. I guess we could give clarity to, were there two scoping sessions had on both of those when we changed courses? Because that was the one thing that I had gotten comment on that people were concerned about, was whether we had two scoping sessions on this EIR when we started out with regulation and then went to ban.
We did not have a separate scoping session.
Okay.
The ban was included as an alternative in the initial, beginning process of the preparation of the EIR. When the board changed and the direction changed, we spent additional time looking at that alternative before the draft EIR was released.
Okay.
But we did not, we did not have separate scoping. It did not require us to restart the clock all over again. It did not raise new environmental effects.
Okay. So since we went from regulate to ban, there was nothing new that would have caused us to do a second scoping session, because it was all going to be covered under that for environmental impacts anyway? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. Unless there's any further questions for the assent group, then I'm going to step forward to the next phase here. Are you all good?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. I don't even know what the next phase is. I think I have my brain wrapped around this.
Should we talk about whether the EIR is sufficient?
Well, I think...
All that's fresh in our mind.
So, okay, so one of the commissioners is asking me a direct question, is if we want to talk about whether or not we feel the EIR is sufficient to be looking at alternatives. So I'm going to turn to you guys and say, hey, do you have any concerns? Do you feel that it's sufficient? Are you comfortable with the EIR at this point to move forward and discuss alternatives?
Well, my own feeling is, when I first read the EIR, I thought, well, this is totally insufficient, because it's assuming that there's going to be compliance if there's a ban. I have since learned and been advised that that's part of the game, that we assume that there's going to be basic compliance if there's a ban. I'm sure that there are probably some, some questions. I mean, there were obviously many questions about the sufficiency of the EIR, but once I had to swallow the fact that we had to assume compliance with the ban, I hope that the EIR is sufficient, and I'm ready to carry forward.
And it seems that, I think I saw, the basic statement is that we can go ahead and pick whatever alternative we want or something else entirely. If we approve the EIR, that doesn't force us into any one of them.
Yeah. If I can just address two things quickly. First, in response to the ban ordinance, the final EIR does address thoroughly this issue about compliance or non-compliance. So I do want to make sure that, you know, for the record, that it is in there, and it is thoroughly addressed.
I recognize that.
All right. Thank you. As to what you can adopt, you can adopt any alternative that is covered in the EIR. You can recommend that. There might be some staff work to make sure that the analysis fully addresses the impacts, but this is the point of discussion.
What I understand from what you'd said before also is that if we elaborate on one of those alternatives, as long as that does not involve the need for new environmental facts, physical facts, we can elaborate on alternatives that are in there.
So long as you explain yourself, you can merge two alternatives. You can modify an alternative.
Thank you.
Sorry, these mics are annoying. I'm sorry, they're huge. They're like in your face. Okay. At this point, I need to get us some direction. So we were given direction from the board of supervisors to review Alternative Two, which is the ban ordinance, and all of you have a copy that came with your packet. As I know Commissioner Latish has a second alternative that he wants to discuss with everybody today. So what I'd like to do, and I'm making this up as I go along, so everybody bear with me, I think I would like to poll the commissioners. You obviously have options. We can poll and say, hey, we want to go with Alternative Two, which is the ban and the direction from the supervisors. And we can review it and edit it and clean it up as best we see fit, or leave it alone. We can opt to review more than one option, so that if the supervisors don't come up with three votes, they have an option behind that, so we could send two recommendations forward that they could choose from, saying that, okay, Alternative Two is first choice. But if for some reason a third vote doesn't come through... come through, they've got to fall back, and we don't end up back here again. I'm concerned about January and February. We've got two big dates coming up on us. So, I would like to give them a complete package that they, they pass. They get it through, and it doesn't have to come back. We don't have time for coming back to this table. Unfortunately, the clock is ticking rather quickly on us. So, I am going to poll, and I'll start down at the other end of the table with Commissioner Wooster. Would you like to just review Alternative 2, or would you like to review Alternative 2 and other options?
Well, I favor Alternative 2, the ban on commercial cultivation, along the lines of the draft ordinance. I'm willing, of course, to talk about anything else, but that's where I'm at now.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk?
I'm also in favor of Alternative 2, but I'm not objecting to hearing anything else.
Okay.
I've been on the fence for the whole time, and I'm still on the fence, but I'm leaning towards 4 at this point. Haven't made a final decision, but that's, and that would require some direction from staff, I think, on how this would go down. I'm still not clear on the procedure, so...
Okay.
And I, I really feel that a ban is, no matter whether I want Calaveras County to be cannabis-free or not, I think, once we get past the EIR, where you have to assume compliance, I think we are entering a very dangerous time, whether it's going to be like Siskiyou County or not, that if we ban and we cut off funds for enforcement from our own taxes...
No, I think you missed the question.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm, I would not be able to vote for Alternative 2, as our resolution suggests, and I would appreciate some discussion on Alternative 4, at least, so that we do provide the, the Board of Supervisors with something to talk about.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm leaning towards Alternative 2 as well, but I would like to have a backup plan that is super, super strict regulation. If the supervisors do not pass Alternative 2 for any reason whatsoever, I want to make sure that we have sent something forward to back it up. It's not that I'm saying, hey, this is what we want you to, we'll get, when we get there, we'll get there, but for right now, I think Julie was bringing clarity to me that she doesn't think that I polled everybody on the sufficiency of the EIR. So, only two commissioners spoke, and she wants clarity on the EIR.
I actually think that Tim asked the question that I had, and I got a...
I'm sorry. Tim asked the question that I had, so I'm good with the EIR. Okay.
It's the way it is.
Okay.
I am in favor of approving the EIR as it respects Alternative 2. I have some issues, but I don't think they really go to the adequacy of the EIR as such. They go to the effectiveness of some of the mitigation measures and how it would operate. But I think the EIR, in terms of discussing the problems, is acceptable on both counts.
Okay. So, do you just want a poll of acceptability from the five commissioners, or do you need a vote saying, we're accepting the EIR?
I think a poll is probably sufficient. At this point in time, at the end of your deliberation on the whole thing, the resolution that you passed for the forward recommendation to the board would include a statement of adequacy of the EIR.
Well, I believe we have five votes for sufficiency of the EIR, and that's what you were looking for.
I just wanted to get a sense. I think that that would be the first step before proceeding to the rest of the discussion.
Got it. Okay. So, at this point, we are going to be pulling out Alternative 2, which was included in our board packets.
So, I had passed out before the meeting a sort of cleaned-up version, so eliminated all the underline and strikeout, but then added some new underline and strikeout, based on some, on a radish sheet that I also provided to you. It's a one-and-a-half-page sheet, double-sided, that just sort of goes through some inadvertent errors that had left out some of the, or we realized there were some mistakes, I guess you could say, and so this would be sort of correcting some of those mistakes. Also, there were some suggestions of clarification from at least one commissioner that we added as well to some of those. So, I think if we use that document rather than the one that's in the packet, for those who, you know, I think some people picked them up. There's still some copies left over here on a chair. Tiffany has those now, so if you want to follow along. I probably don't have enough for everyone, but if you could share, that would be great. So, we could use that document. It, it's the same as what was in the packet, but with some additional edits. So, do all the commissioners have that? Great. So, I don't know if you want me to just go through the, the recommended edits from the errata sheet, just quickly to go, go through those and explain the reasons why, or you are comfortable in just accepting that those are just corrections that needed to be made to definitions and findings, and...
I was comfortable with the definitions and findings. Did any of you have any questions on those?
Well, I, I still have a, a problem with the dwelling and, and private residence, and why we aren't just going with private residence, because I think there's some problems like when you get to 17.95.0405, which uses the term dwelling. You say, there shall be at least one dwelling as defined in such and such of this chapter. And the dwelling that, as defined in the chapter, includes multifamily housing. And the, when you get to subsection 6 of that, it says cannabis cultivation shall only occur within a single designated area of a dwelling. Well, if you're talking about an apartment house, a single designated area of a dwelling, that means an apartment house would only have one possible location for the cultivation, whereas the state clearly provides that each, each individual unit of, let's say, an apartment house is a private residence and has the ability to cultivate. Now, I, I've already stated that I'm, I'm against the ban ordinance, but please believe me that I am trying to make this ordinance as drafted, as sound as possible, so that there won't be enforcement problems and this sort of thing. I'm not trying to, to put an anchor on it and have it sink. I accept the fact that there were, that we're sending on a ban ordinance, and I want to make it as sound as possible. And I think if you just define private residence as you now have, consistent with the state statute, and use that term instead of dwelling, you're not going to have the problems of, of having one paragraph or, such as subsection 4, where you're talking about dwelling, and then you talk about private residence. It just, it makes a lot of sense to me if you just do away with dwelling and have the private residence definition in there, and wherever dwelling appears in the statute, use, use the term private residence. I think otherwise, you, as it is now, you're, you're in problem, you have problems with being contrary to the state law.
Okay. So, being said I am in real estate?
Yes.
The private residence doesn't work for me. It needs to be dwelling.
Well, it's the definition of who can grow six cannabis plants in the state law depends on the definite, depends on private residence.
Can I suggest, can I suggest that instead of changing the definitions, I think that your concern could be addressed by simply, when we're talking about where cultivation occurs within a dwelling, that we could, in that section, so subsection 6 of, let's see, 040C6, cannabis cultivation shall only occur within a single designated area of a residence, and just change that in there and leave the definition?
Private residence.
We could do that.
Yeah.
With that, I would, the definitions, I had a lot, I would have to dig in and research again. There was a lot of thought that went into trying to dovetail with Malkursa with our current land use terms. So, I, I agree that Malkursa anticipates that, that people within, who are in a residence within a multi-unit apartment building, each separate residence gets their six plants. And I, I would rather fix that if we could in the, you know, within the other parts of the ordinance as necessary, rather than changing out the definitions.
If, you know, of course, I, is there a reason why dwelling is a better term to use than some of these?
Because dwelling, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'd have to reconstruct in my head how I got there. I spent a lot of time coming up with, with definitions that I thought would dovetail with, with Malkursa. Some of the definitions have a definition in Malkursa, and we cited to them, and some do not. And so, I wouldn't want to, just off the top of my head, without digging in more, if I was yea or nay on that, but I think your concern, which I understand, can be, can be fixed.
Yeah.
By just, instead of looking at the definition, just plugging in that clarification wherever it looks like it might prohibit somebody in an apartment building.
That's fine. And number 4, subsection 4 of that same section, you have any problem with changing that to, uh, private residence? If an individual cultivating cannabis within a dwelling, again, if we're talking about a multifamily unit, but it might be...
No, because under Malkursa, the landlord can always decide against it, so...
No, no, I understand that, but why, why not private residence there?
Because if we have a single owner of an apartment building who doesn't want to allow any cultivation in the apartment building, they're allowed to say no to that.
But that, they would be the owner of the private residence?
I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused.
Okay, I'm just, I, I just don't, certainly, it's, number, number 6 is the biggest problem. And I don't want to take up a whole lot more time. So if you don't, if you think there's some problem with changing dwelling to private residence in number 4, I'll just have to be happy with it. Of course, you notice at the bottom, you say, shall be maintained at the private residence. You've used the term in the section already.
I will, I mean, I, the direction is simply to make some alterations to number 4 and 6 to clarify that an owner of a, or somebody who's living in a residence in a multifamily dwelling is able to grow their six plants there, as long as they have landlord permission. I can go ahead and make those clarifications, and they can be vetted with the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah. I'd, I'd be particularly happy if you don't use residence, I'd use private residence.
So, I would like to poll the commissioners on that change.
I don't think it needs to say. I like it the way it is, so it doesn't... I'm sorry. It needs to say dwelling, not private residence.
I'm dwelling. I, I, the private, word private residence, it's not working for me. It's, it's per dwelling, and so, when, and I know, we can, we can disagree to agree and agree and not agree and all that, so...
I don't follow the use of the word dwelling in the beginning, and then private residence at the end. I just don't, I don't see why we switched. So, I'll defer to Julie. If Julie wants it this way, fine.
Are we all in agreement that we should clarify that people who are in an apartment building would not be prohibited from having their six plants, just because they're in an apartment building, as long as the landlord's okay with it? If you're all in agreement on that, I will tweak the language to maybe, to see if there's additional clarity that, that's needed there. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Danny?
Can I have access to that, if you let me know?
Okay. So, we're all good?
Thank you.
Next? We're going to go through all of Tim's edits, because he'll have a bunch here.
Okay. Again, on that paragraph 6, the last sentence, oh, first I should say it. Paragraph 5, it has the requirement that each cultivator must maintain his or her primary residence on this parcel, which will get us past a lot of fraudulent claims of, oh yes, this is my residence, and yet it's really only used for cannabis growth. But then the last paragraph of 6 says, the cultivation shall be subordinate, incidental, and accessory to the residential use. And I, I'm afraid that that would get us in trouble with the state that says that anybody in a private residence can have their six plants. If you have somebody come in, and gee, the, this room has great exposure to the sun, and it'd be great for growing cannabis, and that's the reason they buy the house, I think that last sentence then would say, oh, well, they can't do that. And I think the, I think, I think we're asking for trouble with the state, especially if we have this requirement that each cultivator must maintain his or her primary residence on this parcel. We've got some valid way of, of testing that.
I will tell you, it is next to impossible to validate primary residence.
Is it possible to validate whether cultivation is subordinate, incidental, and accessory to the residential use?
Well, if you've got six plants, and you've got a whole house, you know, if it's, I suppose if the house is otherwise vacant, no one is living there. I don't, I don't know if there's anything in Malkursa, and I'll have to defer to Julie on this, that a landlord could be growing plants in a rental unit where a tenant is also living. I, I just don't know Malkursa that well to know if that's something that would be permitted. It is, I have often tried to, um, let me rephrase that. I've experienced ordinances that require primary residence, and the difficulty in enforcing that rule is very challenging.
I, you know, I, I have...
Because you can have a driver's license, and here's my address, but, you know, I, my driver's license still says I live in Placerville, just because I haven't updated it yet.
I, I actually have nothing wrong with the result here. I'm just concerned about whether the state would get...
So, I would be concerned about trying to put a provision in there that requires proof of residency of the specific home, whether it has something that's physical that you can look at, and you can see, oh, you know, the only thing this house is being used for is cultivation. No one is living here. That's clear, not a subordinate use. If someone is living there and growing, you know, if it's the landlord that's growing, but the tenant is living there, I assume that's an operation that both parties have agreed to, and as long as it's compliant with state law, it, you know, that's something that would be easy enough to, to enforce.
I'll just, I'll finish by just saying, well, that, the proof that something is subordinate, incidental, and accessory to the residential use is something that seems to be separate from the state law, but if, if the other commissioners don't have a problem with this, I'm...
Okay, and I'm going to stop you right there for just a second.
Sure.
So, we have made it to page 7 of edits. Does anybody have anything on pages 1 through 7 that they would like to reference any edits to, so that we don't have to backtrack as we go through this? I'd kind of like to just make sure if anybody has any notes on those pages they want to vet out right now? We're cleared 1 through 7?
Yep.
Okay. We'll move on to page 8 and 9. Does anybody have anything on 8 and 9?
Just a second.
Yeah. On paragraph B in the middle, talks about illegal diversion of water supply, about the fifth or sixth line down, and then contamination of soil, contamination of waters of the state, et cetera, et cetera. Are these words from the state code, or did we just come up with these phrases?
No, they are not.
It would seem that we would want to also talk about contamination of waters from all the other items, the... the other items, the rodenticides, fungicides, herbicides, pesticides. They would also be something we would be concerned about, that contamination of water.
This was language that I developed, working with our environmental health department, and this was their recommended language that covered the full range of environmental concerns that they look at as a part of their task, their, their charge to protect the public health of the county, you know, the environmental health of the county. I think when we're talking about water, you know, protection of the water, we're talking about, you know, water quality, turbidity, you know, erosion of that. Clearly, all the other, you know, herbicides, fungicides, rodenticides, that could be in water or on land, or wherever it might be, and covers the broad range of potential contamination by those substances. I don't know that it's necessary to add, you know, water to that, because it's, in, in my mind, in reading this and working with environmental health, that was sort of included. It was assumed that it would be, you know, wherever those contaminants are found.
I thought one of the things that people were talking about in, in the public comments was the fact that these chemicals are potentially and maybe actually getting into the water supplies, creeks, rivers, lakes.
Well, that's what, it says contamination of waters of the state from soil additives such as soil and mulch, amendments and fertilizers. Yeah, I probably, you know, it, I don't know that it changes things by adding water to the next phrase. I'm, I'm just not sure it's necessary.
On that section, I had a problem, because the original draft used the word further, and you've nicely exercised that word out, I appreciate it. But, that got me to thinking, I proposed, if, if you all have the paper I gave out at the start of the afternoon, page three, I've got a reworded section there, which takes these various things. It seemed to me that this, this ordinance, which says you shall take immediate steps to do this and that and the other thing, there are some things that you just have to stop immediately. And I've divided out those from the ones where you take immediate steps. In other words, I, I had, one, shall stop as soon as possible all illegal diversion of water supply, active contamination of soil, improper keeping, storage, or disposal of rodenticides, fungicides, herbicides, and pesticides, and improper keeping, generation, storage, and disposal of household waste, fuel, and chemical retainers, and other hazardous waste materials that may cause harm to the public health or the environment. Those are all things that we want people to stop right now, immediately as possible.
Well, even number one, where you say, shall stop as soon as possible, it shall stop immediately.
Well, I'm, I was trying to be reasonable, but that, I mean, and number two are things that they, you know, they really need to take steps to prevent further actions. I, I think it's a, a good idea to divide them up, and whatever language you want to use on, I mean, as soon as possible is now, if that's possible.
But, yeah, I think it needs to say immediately, not as soon as possible.
Yep. I, if you want to say immediately, that's fine. I just think it's, it's effective to divide this particular section into the things that have to happen right now, and the things that they have to, you know, have to work on. But, I take my direction from the rest of the commission.
Well, for what it's worth, I don't have a problem with the reorganization, as Commissioner Lattish has proposed. I would strike as soon as possible, and either just leave it, shall stop all illegal, or, you know, shall stop immediately, I don't think it really matters. I think as soon as possible leaves it too open. Well, it wasn't possible.
That's fine.
I've heard enough stories about that.
We're, we're fighting what is possible. Yeah. That would be fine with me. What do other people think? I mean, I'm, I'm happy...
I'm good, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with Commissioner Lattish's version with the deletion of the phrase as soon as possible.
So, I'm completely missing something here, not the first time today. This section is talking about remediation of an abandoned cannabis cultivation site, and someone having an abandoned cannabis cultivation site has to take all these steps. Why do, why do we call it an abandoned one? Don't we really mean illegal, because now it's illegal? It just, it just strikes me as, maybe it's still there, I think it's really abandoned.
Peter's thinking hard on that one.
I don't know that it matters. I think that we were anticipating that we would have a lot of sites that were just left abandoned, that if cultivation were prohibited in the county, that growers might, some growers might just walk away from their site. So, you know, we sort of assumed they would be abandoned. If the property owner were to stay there and to utilize the site for some other purpose, it wouldn't necessarily be abandoned. They could grow tomatoes or something else on the site.
But that's when, that's when your restoration ordinance section would come into play.
Right.
It seemed to me that this was, I read this as saying, okay, the, the site's been abandoned, owner, you are still responsible for doing these specific things, and then move on to restoration. But these are, these are the things you have to start with.
That, that is the point. And I hear what Commissioner Bichelli is saying, is that, you know, it's not necessarily abandoned. They could still be there, it's just no longer permitted to cultivate cannabis, so it's a, and maybe we just strike the word abandoned, just cannabis, a former, maybe a former cannabis cultivation site?
So, you don't get into whether it's legal or illegal?
So, we, I guess we use that term, because cannabis cultivation site is used in other provisions of the code, and so, we're differentiating between those sites that
Right.
were growing and are no longer growing.
Yeah. So, I think you need something there, like former or abandoned.
What about unpermitted? Oh, no, because some of them never have.
It should be former.
You could take it to the absurdity, and some people will. If they're still illegally growing, they haven't abandoned it, so this wouldn't apply to that.
So, I think what, what the word abandoned is applying to is a lot of these registered grows that are completely legal at this moment are unleashed land, and they're going to just go, if I can't grow here, see you later, you clean up the mess, and then it falls back on the landowner, because the person that was physically doing it's gone, and the landowner signed an agreement that they would be responsible for all the cleanup. So, for me, it does become abandoned, but it's an abandoned grow that could be the responsibility of the landowner, or someone bought land here and they're just going to let it go.
So, aren't we really just talking about a cannabis cultivation site, a site which was, had, you know, used within the last 24 months, whether it's abandoned or not, whether it was licensed or not?
Previous.
Previous. Well, what if it's still currently illegally being used?
Well, wasn't it the case that under the urgency ordinance, people had something like 90 days?
Hundred and eighty total.
After a ban or regulation was enacted, before they had to cease activities, and so, you could have a ban enacted and still have cultivation going on under the urgency ordinance for a period of time.
Yes, it's 90 days.
And so, until that ends, you can't force people to do all of these things.
Yeah, 90 days after the effective date of the ordinance, which would be 120 days.
So, that'll be overriding the UO?
Okay. Just real quick, under L, under definitions, cultivation site means the location where cannabis has been planted, grown, harvested, dried, cured, graded, or trimmed. So, what if we just go to cultivation site?
Just say, get rid of abandoned.
I, I think we would need to wordsmith this, this paragraph a little bit more than just simply strike that, because we're sort of, we're talking about it as sort of a definition there. But, I, what I'm hearing is that you would like to see the word abandoned taken out, just reference cultivation site with the understanding that any cultivation site upon the effectiveness of the ordinance, whether they get the 90 days, or they previously abandoned it, or if it was deemed illegal beforehand, they have a responsibility to clean it up, and if the grower leaves it in a state that is not remediated, then the landowner is responsible. So, if county council, I could, could play with the language of that a bit, but I think I get, I think I understand the concern there, is that it may not necessarily be abandoned, but what you want is that all cultivation sites will be remediated.
And that other question, I don't know if Commissioner Wooster was actually raising that question, but he pointed out that the, the UO does allow some longer period of time. And I know the UO also says this can be replaced with a permanent ordinance or whatever, but I'm...
Well, anyone operating under the UO will have the right to continue to cultivate for a period of 90 days.
Does it say that?
After the effective date. It's not in this ordinance, but it's in the ordinance under which they are currently operating.
Maybe it ought to say in here, some exception for that.
I, I don't think it's necessary, I think it might end up being confusing.
Suppose you put the word legally in front of occurs, so would read, but, so the cultivation is no longer legally occurring, or no longer legally occurs.
Seventeen nine five oh three oh C talks about, gives the time limit for coming into compliance in a way that dovetails with the prior urgency ordinance.
What did, what page are you on?
So, the time limits for when growers have to come into compliance with this ordinance, on page four, seventeen nine five oh three oh, were designed to complement the urgency ordinance statement that says you have 90 days to come into compliance with the permit ordinance. So, that's all been calibrated into the timelines. I don't know that it needs to be further stated, but it already dovetails with that urgency.
Good.
I think that Commissioner Wooster's suggestion of putting in the word legally, legally, no longer legally occurs, helps to
Clarify.
clarify that.
In what section?
Oh five oh A, the section we were just talking about. Because we use the term abandoned cultivation site in, throughout this section, and it's different than a cultivation site in which cannabis is, is occurring. And so, I think by having that clarification, that that may solve the, the problem.
And, but, since that's in a definition of abandoned cannabis cultivation site, you'd keep the word abandoned in B, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so, that's page eight and nine. Are there any other edits for any of the commissioners?
Just a second.
Okay. Then, we're going to go over to...
Can I?
Yes, you can.
Before you go.
Just before, excuse me, Madam Chair, to no longer spend the taxpayers' money on high-paid consultants, unless there are any questions for the ascent folks or for outside counsel, I suggest that they probably leave at this point, as we wordsmith our way through the ordinance itself. Is there any other questions regarding the EIR specifically that you might have?
I won't be able to answer your questions about the EIR near as well as these folks can, so, if it's an EIR question, please don't depend on me.
I, I don't have any more of this stuff.
Okay, so, if it's an EIR question, we're going to be meeting tomorrow, and we can leave that question in your hands to get an answer to.
Well, I, I think, of what I understood, was that
We've accepted it.
The commission found that it was legally adequate, and you're prepared to forward a recommendation to certify the EIR.
But we're subject to change our mind as we go along, so...
No, no.
If we have any questions, Peter, that was a poll, not a vote. If we have any questions, we could always sell, let you know, and you could email them and get us the appropriate answer.
Yes, I could do that.
Okay. Keep your emails on, please. Thank you. Thanks for joining us today.
So, on page nine, above paragraph D, the underlined paragraph?
Yes.
These provisions, I guess it's do not, or is that
No, yeah.
Do not require restoration?
It's supposed to be a D.
I'm sorry, where, where are we?
The provisions do not require restoration.
I'm sorry, Peter, the acoustics are so bad.
They are.
Sometimes we don't know what you're saying. The question is whether, he just found a typo. On page nine, the, the language about these provisions do not require, should be do instead of do not.
Yes.
Okay.
And the real question, though, is, it almost sounds like this is, I mean, you're creating or just, just washing out all the previous paragraphs. Why do we put it in there, and why is it underlined?
Well, this was a language that, actually, Commissioner Lattish, maybe not exact language, but a suggestion.
So, I can speak, I can speak to it.
And so, and, and I think it's, I want to make it clear that the remediation, the restoration, is not to a pre-cultivation condition, that the trees aren't going to be replanted, the whole hillside is not going to be recontoured, it's going to be stabilized and could be used for some other purpose. But what I, what we don't want is grading that occurred without a permit that is eroding, there are debris scattered across the site, there's illegal buildings that are still out there that could, you know, become a hazard. And so, that it's, sort of like what we require for Service Mining Reclamation Act. We don't require them to recontour the whole thing back to what it was before mining, but we make it so that it's not going to be a health or environmental hazard, and it's usable for some other purpose in the future.
I, I suggested that language because, number one, it was really good language, and it comes from Peter and the, and the EIR. But, also, it was unclear, reading the whole section, it, it talks about remediation and restoration, and it didn't make clear whether you had to put it back to square zero or not.
Well, I think what bothers me is that the terms condition free of hazards and visual blight, it almost sounds like that's the only thing you have to focus on. It seems inconsistent with the rest of it. I don't know.
If you, yeah, do you have suggestions? I think the main thing is, is that it does not require restoration of the site to its pre-cannabis cultivation condition.
Would that be subject to review by the planning director, as to just what it does require, or?
Well, all of the provisions of C apply, one through nine. They must do all of those things if applicable. What we're saying is, when you come in with your grading plan for restoration, it's not to change the terrace hillside back to, you know, a natural thing and replant trees so that they look like they were before they removed the trees. It's just not feasible. It will be erosion control measures put in place. It may be that if someone had graded and there are two steep slopes, that they need to recontour them to, you know, a minimum, you know, two to one slope or something like that.
You're going to require them to plant trees, if they've scraped the dirt free?
Well, they'd have to revegetate it, but it wouldn't necessarily mean, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that they have to restock it with timber.
If, if the conditions for reclamation and restoration are in C, I, could it just say that these provisions do not require restoration of the site to its pre-cannabis cultivation condition, but require the site to be reclaimed pursuant to the above-stated provisions, just so there's, I think what, what Commissioner Bichelli is concerned about, and I share some concerns, that the, there'll be a discussion of whether hazards and visual blight somehow modify...
That's, that's fine, and, so, site to be reclaimed as provided above, or whatever you said, to a condition that allows for suitable subsequent use of the property. I think that, that language at the end is very good.
Well, the other part is the pre-cannabis. It doesn't require restoration of the site to a, a perfect pre-cannabis, but I think there is some intent to go back to the pre-cannabis look.
Well, that was not the intent, but... Well, that was not the intent, but if that is something the commission desires, we could certainly write that language.
I mean, if, if, if the property's going to, if they're going to plant it in wheat, say, or grapes, something of that sort, you know, if they have, if their terraces are well done with all sorts of grading permits and this sort of thing, and it works for the grapes, that'd be great. You know, so I think, I think we just need to make clear what, that we're talking not going back to year one. And that it allows for suitable subsequent use of the property, I think, is language you do want in there.
So is that your direction, and we can wordsmith to encapsulate those?
Exactly.
Encapsulate those policies? I would rather be, have a little bit of leeway to get the perfect sentence, but, okay.
Sure.
Okay.
And allows should have an S on it if you keep allows in there.
Thank you. Are you okay with that, Peter?
Yes.
My next thing is on page 11. There?
I don't know, we need to check with the other commissioners. Does anybody have any edits to page 10? Okay, then we're going to go to page 11 and let Tim give us his one edit.
The very, that's it, one word. In H at the very top of the page, I think we should take the word suffers out because this is broad language that could lead to serious collection complications, including claims of invalidity. A person suffers something if he or she is subjected to it. He or she doesn't necessarily have anything to do with permitting it, making it happen, or anything else, she's subjected to it. And I, the example I give is a 22-year-old daughter home from school who does not agree with her parents' illegal cannabis cultivation, and yet she's subjected to it. Under the dictionary, she would suffer that unlawful cultivation, and under this ordinance, she'd become liable. Now, is the county ever going to actually throw her in jail because of this? No, but it's, it's a strange thing to have in the, in the language here. I think causes, permits, or maintains is, is broad enough. Those are active terms. Suffers is an inactive term. And I think you open yourself to challenges.
Have any opinion on that?
Me?
Yeah.
I think, I'm sure we can defend it without the term. I don't necessarily share the same concern based on that language, however, I don't think it's a problem, it's not a big problem to take it out either.
But you like it in it.
I took the word suffers.
I'm not a commissioner, so.
I didn't ask, I asked legal counsel a question. Peter, what are your thoughts?
I would defer to counsel on this one.
Ethan, are you paying attention to what's going on here because we're coming to you?
We're all ready by code hearings for tomorrow, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear what Peter said. Here we are.
Peter, it was deferring to legal counsel, so I have a couple more attorneys on this end. How do you feel, Commissioner Bocelli?
Delete suffers.
What?
Delete it.
Okay.
Please. It has no business being in there.
Bocelli's got something to say.
Well, I took the word suffers to mean somebody who sat there, watched it occur, had the ability to stop it, and didn't do it.
That would be permits.
No, it's different. You didn't give them permission.
You put five attorneys in a group.
You sat there and had the ability to put a stop to it and said nothing. A 22-year-old doesn't have the ability to stop. And what this does, it also modifies owner. So what, if you leave this in, you have let owners away off the hook when they knew or should have known what was going on.
What about allows? Do you think that makes it, makes it easier?
Allows makes it better.
That makes it better for me.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
I agree. Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Sisk, I didn't ask your opinion, but I didn't have one.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, can we go to page 12? Everybody good on 11?
I'm not done with 11.
Oka noke.
We have a definition of costs of enforcement in this draft ordinance, but it's not used here. And it seems to me it should be used here because I think it's somewhat broader.
I missed the first part of what you said. I need you to lean into that mic.
Okay, the, in the definition section, seventeen point nine five point oh two oh H defines costs of enforcement. And this is the place where you would be dealing with that subject, yet the definition, which is fairly well thought out, is not used.
So we want to make IA and add a...
I would just say jointly and severally liable for all costs of enforcement.
Are you talking about H, I, N, J, all three?
Talking about H.
H only, okay.
Under H only.
I think that's a very elegant suggestion.
You got it?
I agree.
I'm sorry, where in H are we substituting language? I wasn't able to hear.
It's going to be the headline. He's under oh two oh H.
Fourth line down, Julie.
He wants that to be the header.
Just the header we're changing?
No, no.
It would read they would be jointly and severally liable for all resulting administrative fees and for any and all costs of enforcement.
Oh, okay.
incurred by the county.
Period.
Yeah.
In the event the county brings and prevails, et cetera. And then I have a suggestion on J, which is the next section.
So would be strike, including but not limited to all administrative costs because that's included in the definition, right?
Yes. Actually, I have a suggestion on I, sorry.
Hey, you're warming up.
I'm almost done. Okay. I says that each person or entity violating this chapter shall be guilty of a separate offense, et cetera, but it doesn't say of what. Seems to me that this should say that she'll be guilty of a separate misdemeanor offense, so people know what it is.
Are all the violations in the chapter, are they all misdemeanors?
I don't think the county has the ability to create felony.
Okay. Good point.
The default under state law is that they're a misdemeanor unless you expressly say that they're an infraction. So this assumes, I believe the default here is it does assume a misdemeanor offense.
My only point is that people reading this may not know that.
He wants it stated.
Right.
If you put it in there, you tell them.
I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're not only talking, that we can use this for both criminal and civil violations.
Ah.
That's my only concern, is I don't want to be hamstrung, right, by...
I see your point.
Good idea.
Having seen your point, is that, do you have another suggestion?
I think we can fix it by not doing what I suggested, but simply adding a phrase that says each violation of this chapter constitutes a misdemeanor.
So you're still wanting to put the word misdemeanor in?
But where?
Yes, but not in the way I originally proposed because it seems to limit rather than help.
And where are you putting it?
Separate sentence that says each violation of this chapter constitutes a misdemeanor.
Or can constitute.
What about J? Couldn't it be in J?
Well, J has to do with the administrative fine, which is quite different.
So should be assessed, shall be assessed administrative fine would be the second part. First part would be shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be assessed. Or would that be may be assessed?
It doesn't really matter where you put it. I thought it belonged better in I.
So you just add a, you've added that sentence at the end of I, is that what you were saying before?
I would add a sentence at the beginning of I.
Beginning of I, okay.
Each violation of this.
Okay. Ms. Commissioner Wooster?
What about adding just a K, saying any violation of this ordinance can be prosecuted as a misdemeanor?
That would be fine.
That would just make it easier.
That's great.
Okay.
And I have a question about another part of I. And this is probably just a term of art, but the, each person or entity violating this chapter shall be guilty of a separate offense for each and every day or portion thereof. I mean, if there's 60 seconds and a minute, have they committed 60 misdemeanors? I, I'm, I'm really, I'm not trying to cause problems, but it's just...
I just want to, first of all, be clear, I mean, what you're saying makes some sense, but I want to make sure that, you know, that the county often, it's up to the, it's up to the district attorney whether she wants to charge something as a misdemeanor. That's not up to the county. The county, however, is, I presume that the commission wants the county to have the option of still proceeding with administrative civil violations using code enforcement. And I just want to make sure that the, the language doesn't become muddled so that there's interpretive issues about whether or not we're talking about a civil or criminal enforcement.
I think the language that either you or Commissioner Wooster last stated for the sentence took care of that, was that may be prosecuted as a misdemeanor.
I thought you were just speaking in terms of, of criminal offenses.
I think it's on a different point now. It was my understanding the commission all agreed with Commissioner Wooster's suggestion based on, I think, what Ethan Turner suggested, was that we have a separate item K, which states that any violation of this chapter can be prosecuted as a misdemeanor.
That's what I thought we were doing.
And so then the next issue I thought came up was what does any portion of a day mean?
I think, I suspect the idea is that we want to be able to say that if somebody has a violation and 24 hours hasn't expired since the violation, that a portion of a day can still constitute.
Right.
A single day's violation. Is that...
I'm sure that's what the intent was.
That sounds like a great idea. How do we say it?
Okay.
It just, well, it does say, actually, I don't think you need or portion thereof because it says guilty of a separate offense for each and every day on which any violation of any provision of this chapter is committed. So if you have a half day of violation, it's committed on that day. So I, I think it's so artfully drafted, you can do away with some of the language.
I took the portion thereof as being if you violated for any part of a day, meaning the last day, you're stuck with the offense for that. In other words, if you stopped violating it at 8:00 in the morning, you're still stuck for that day.
Yeah, but that's any portion of that day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I just don't think we need the language or portion thereof because we have every day on which any violation of provision occurred. And if the violation occurred at 7:00 in the morning and he stopped violating at 8:00 in the morning, he still committed a violation on that day.
On that day.
He or she, county. Things trade.
I think you're right.
Okay.
Does the commission concur on that?
Yes.
What are we doing?
Yes.
Striking or portion thereof from I.
Does someone have any edits on those two pages? Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
You all need more coffee.
Everybody's good.
Okay.
I'm good.
So let's go to 14 and 15. Any edits there?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, in 14, finding P as in Papa. The first sentence seems to me both unnecessary and out of place. It talks about the county's geographic and climatic conditions that include dense forested areas with adequate precipitation and mild winters, provide conditions that are favorable to outdoor cannabis cultivation, et cetera. That's kind of stuck in the middle of the history of the, why the urgency ordinance came to pass. And it just doesn't have anything to do with that discussion. Plus, it looks like we have two Qs.
We do have two Qs. You're watching your P and Q.
So what do you want, what do you want taken out of there? What do you say?
I think the first sentence of P doesn't belong there. Not necessary.
The whole sentence that you read?
Correct. And then we just need to fix the numbering with the two Qs.
So P should start with, as means if...
I mean...
...by getting impact findings, okay.
I mean, maybe the placement's strange, but it does, it seems to be a finding as to why we have so many cannabis growers in the county.
And I think it was originally to explain why we needed to exercise our police power to regulate cannabis because this cannabis growing was attractive in the area.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think it could support a ban as well as regulation, but I don't know that it's critical.
I wouldn't have any problem with deleting P, but I think it's, it's, it's accurate and somewhat relative, relevant to the situation.
Yeah, I'd say leave it, but get rid of that Q in the middle there.
I just didn't need to...
So that'd be, the first Q would be a separate finding, and I'll re-letter the rest of them.
Yeah, so you just need to, that one would be moved over, and then the other paragraphs would be relettered, right? Yeah.
Okay. So is everybody good with that? One, two, three, four, five?
I am.
I am.
Two, that's three with me, that's enough to go. Okay, next.
I go to page 18.
They're turning pages.
My next suggestion's on page 18. Does anybody have anything to do for 18?
Just all the numbering, these three chains. Okay, let's hear your page 18, since we're not getting any other comment.
I just have a question as to an MM. How we're saying that the ordinance itself will not be deemed a defense or immunity to any action brought by the county of Calaveras or Calaveras County District Attorney, it seems to be, if the county of Calaveras is suing me for something to do with the ordinance, and I'm complying with the ordinance, I can't provide as a defense. I guess I don't really understand why that provision's in there.
I think initially, it was basically, I don't remember where, I think that was imported from the prior findings, and...
It, I mean, I'm seeing a concern, but it, this seems very broad, that, I mean, if I'm complying with the ordinance itself, and the county is suing me, I should be able to say, "But I'm complying with this ordinance." Now, maybe I'm violating some other ordinance.
I think, I mean, I'm sure that the fact that we have this language would not prevent somebody from exercising their criminal defense rights. I think the idea at the time was that the Board of Supervisors did not want what they were allowing to interfere with the DA's charging ability, and that they were just stating their intention.
How about this? How about, "No provision of this chapter shall be deemed a defense or immunity any action brought," I was thinking, "under this ordinance or under this chapter by the County of Calaveras." That's where I'm concerned about, if the...
I mean, again, I don't, I don't think that the defensibility of our ordinance depends on whether that stays in or not, but what does the commission think?
I'm tending to agree with them, I'm thinking about it.
Commissioner Wooster, do you have an opinion down there?
Well, I suspect that this provision came in as a carryover from the urgency ordinance. And the idea probably was that if somebody's violating some separate law, like this Health and Safety Code, that they couldn't point to our urgency ordinance as affording a defense to a state law violation. I think that's true anyway. I don't think this sentence is necessary.
Maybe we're better off without that sentence at all.
I don't see how it really, it's confusing to me whether it even adds anything at this point, when we're dealing, not with the urgency ordinance, but with a ban.
Kind of typo and double K, two N, and the bottom line, KK.
Oh, and N. So if you don't see a problem with taking out that sentence, we don't have to draft a whole paragraph to explain what we mean by it.
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
Is it just a sentence or the entire finding?
I wouldn't get rid of the entire finding. I think the second...
No, I think, I think, I think the second sentence should be eliminated.
Okay.
Okay, everybody good with that?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So we go to page 19.
No.
Okay, then I think we're done editing alternative to ordinance. And we're going to take a break for just a few minutes, and then come back.
Or should we break for the night? Should we break?
It's almost 5:00.
We're staying till 6:00. Why are you saying it's almost 5:00?
Because that's when we're over.
It's not that, it's not that spot on.
Oh, yeah.
That's when a car turns into a pump.
Okay, so...
Is this you? Somebody just dumped it on us.
That's yours.
Thank you.
Be back on. So where we're at right now is that we just finished edits to alternative to the ban ordinance, and we are going to, after having discussions with staff, we would be approving that with staff going back and doing the edits that we discussed today. I think there was some confusion as to whether we were going to continue to work on a second alternative to send to the soups with, well, let me say Board of Supervisors to be appropriate, with the ban alternative. And I wanted to clarify the vote on doing that and make sure that that is what the commission wants to do. So, Commissioner Lattish?
I think it's very valuable for the, we don't want to come back here again, as you said.
Correct.
And we don't want the supervisors to say, "Oh, that kind of looked good." Planning Commission, give us your word on that. I think it would be a good thing to provide the Board of Supervisors with a clear second choice alternative, and I think the commission can probably achieve that tomorrow. I, I had prepared the document that I passed out to the public and to the commissioners, and that has things in it that, I'm not sure whether a good idea or not, but I think we should try and agree on a second choice and provide it to the supervisors. I think...
Okay. Commissioner Bocelli?
Are you suggesting that we have to stay until 9:00 to do this tonight?
No, we are going to adjourn. We have just about 30 minutes of video left, but tomorrow it could be a later night, just so that you are prepared.
We have 30 minutes of what?
Video.
Video.
Who's video?
Did you go have a drink during break, or what?
I thought you meant I had to watch a movie or something. I'm done, all right?
Yeah, I'm done too.
5:00, this ticker goes...
Okay, let's get back on track here. We have very little video left, recording your beautiful face over there, so...
Yes, I would like us just to have another alternative to give to the board and let them...
Thank you for your vote on that. Commissioner Sisk, I can't see you, but I would like your opinion.
Tomorrow is when we work on this. We're gonna work off the one that Mr. Lattish gave us, is that it?
We can work on anything you want.
Tomorrow.
We do not have to go with Mr. Lattish. We can do whatever you want. He is just one voice. There's five of us.
That's right.
Hang in there.
Yes, I think we should do another one, and yes, I think we should do it tomorrow.
Okay. And then Commissioner Wooster?
I don't have any objection to discussing that tomorrow, as long as the end result makes it clear that alternative two is the preferred alternative of the commission.
Okay.
I agree with that.
So we have five votes to send a second alternative forward for the Board of Supervisors. So we would like to work on that tomorrow morning. I don't know what it's gonna look like, sorry.
I just want to clarify, the commission is not expecting staff to incorporate the edits between now and tomorrow.
No.
We have...
No.
Thank you.
She cannot do that. You know, she wants to go home too, just like you.
She can...
Here comes Big Bucks.
Her home computer will work fine.
Okay, we are not doing the edits tonight. I'm making that decision for you. You get to go home tonight, really. I want you rested tomorrow. It's gonna be more difficult tomorrow.
You're bringing coffee again?
I am not bringing coffee again. I did it once, somebody else can. So, I'm sorry?
I think we should make it clear to the members of the public that we've already commented on the alternative, so that part of public comment is done.
Is over, okay.
We will have the dispensary.
Right, as soon as we finish working on the second alternative, we will be going into the dispensary ordinance, which is 17.91. There are a lot of edits and corrections that I think are gonna be done to that as well. You will get an opportunity for public comment there. If you don't like the results of the planning commission's two days of hearings, hopefully not three, then you can take it to the Board of Supervisors. Yes! Okay. On that note, does anything, we need to vote on approving of the work that we just did. So the resolution for...
Well, I think if you're going to incorporate an alternative, you might want to hold off on your action until that is done.
Got it.
Just for clarification, you're not hoping to have a complete ordinance draft, but just simply the, the primary policy points to be included in a, an alternative?
Right.
Correct.
And I'm certainly open to, if I got too detailed, as long as the policy's clear, that's fine.
Okay, excellent.
It's discussion. I got it. Got it? You got it? Okay. So on that note, we were supposed to be here until 5:00, but Commissioner Bocelli is asking to go home early. So we're gonna let him get a five-minute run for that door. Everybody stay seated until he's out of the building. Okay, meeting is adjourned.